And welcome to the work session for Lynchburg City Council, May 5. First, it will continue discussion regarding the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. And we are going to have a presentation and discussion regarding the future financial and operating structure of the refuse collection. So, thank you, Mr. Waldica and Ms. Hart will be doing this presentation for us.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. We're so glad to be here to talk trash with you again. We have, I'm going to continue to make that joke as long as we, that's right. So, we've had a number of conversations in the last two years about trash collection and how we manage that program. So, we're really excited to talk with you tonight about how we're going to move forward and make some, hopefully make some final decisions as we come to conclusion on all of those conversations. So, tonight, I want to just, we'll just talk about a couple of things. We will talk about the council, the previously council-approved changes to the refuse program. You'll remember that we had a number of conversations previously about that. We have a number of points for remaining discussion and additional items that we will need to find decisions on. And then, at the end, we'll talk about the revised timeline for implementation of the changes that we've, we've come up with. So, as I mentioned before, we've had a number of conversations in the last two years about this topic. And in February and March of this year, we came to a final conclusion on a number of those items that have already been decided by city council. And I wanted to just go through a little bit about what those decisions were and just as we move along. So, first of all, we made the decision to transition to a monthly billing structure, not necessarily what the actual rate will be at that time, but we said we're going to move to a monthly billing structure. At that time, we said that will occur on January 1st of next year. We talked about a brush and bulk, a new brush and bulk schedule. We talked about continuation of multiple cart sizes and options for folks that want to have them. We've continuation of the six recycling centers, as well as no curbside recycling at this time. Again, that's something we think about, we should talk about in the future, but it's not something we should do now. And also, the removal of exemptions to the various billing items. So, those are items that we have, that have already been voted on, there's items that have been decided. But there are a couple of items that were left that we said that we would address during, particularly during the budget process. The first one is the refuse collection fee structure and how that's going to evolve over time, as well as the addition of one bulk and brush and education and enforcement employee. And then, finally, we need to talk about revisions to the refuse ordinance. So, we're not going to do that tonight. We have that tentatively scheduled for next week, pending some decisions that you make tonight. It'll inform how we write that, finalize that ordinance, but that will be coming next week as we go along. Okay, so, we're going to start off with fees and how we want to change that structure. I just want to remind you of our original staff recommendation that we, you heard earlier this year, and it was included in the manager's proposed budget. The original staff recommendation was to set the trash rate at 1502 a month for all carts, for each cart that a person, that a resident's had, for a monthly fee. That rate would have been in effect, or would be in effect, for 18 months, so you would not have an additional rate increase next year. Because we were starting January 1st, we said, let's do it one time. You have that time, that rate in place for 18 months. If a household needed or wanted additional or multiple carts for the amount of trash that they produce, they could certainly have an additional cart for an additional service fee, right? So, that's where we kind of get to, the more you, you throw away, the more you pay, and you know, et cetera. Compare that to the present monthly equivalent rate presently of approximately $9.17 a month. That's based on the larger cart size. That tells you a little bit about what the, what the recommendation was. And I want to point out, at that 1502 rate, it still would have required a $1.67 million subsidy from the general fund. Of course, trash is part of the general fund, so make that confusion, but what we're saying here is that the fees that we charge would still be $1.67 million less than what it actually costs to do the service. So, just, it's, I think it's really important context. So, we made that recommendation to you, that was included in the manager's budget. It certainly was a good thing at the time, but we recognize that, given the environment that we are in now with the COVID-19 situation, we realize that you probably want to have an additional option potentially that would allow you to make the best decision that you possibly can for the city. So, we have three options in front of you this evening. Our original staff recommendation, which I just talked about, we have a hybrid approach, which is basing the fee on that, that monthly equivalent rate of what we're paying now, but doing it for 12 months rather than starting on July, on January 1st, excuse me. And then, the third item, the third potential option would be just the status quo. You go back to the annual decals, everything sort of stays the same, and we would, people would need to be purchasing decals by October 1st. So, we had a lot of conversation about this, and we, we want to highlight option B is what we think is the most appropriate option, in particular because when we look at the effects of various decisions that you'll make, you know, if you, if you make a decision that's different from the original recommendation, there, of course, will be a budgetary impact for next year, right? So, if you go with option B, we'll bring in approximately $140,000 less in revenue than we had anticipated in the manager's proposed budget. If you go with the status quo, that number, or option C, that number would increase to $262,000. So, so, I just want, I want you to have that in mind. As far as cons go, option A, you know, we recognize that people probably don't have a lot of interest in raising rates and raising fees at this point. So, we recognize that, that's the issue. Option B, we have a challenge with our inventory of trash, trash carts, right? So, we, we know how many decals we sell every year, we know how, you know, many, how many units we're, we think we're servicing, but we really have no reason to believe that that's really an accurate representation of what's actually out there for a variety of reasons. And so, we need to go out and we need to do an inventory of the actual number of carts and the sizes that are out there, so we can make sure that we are billing people appropriately. If you go with option B versus option A, the challenge with that is that there, there's not enough time to appropriately do an inventory of what's actually there. So, you have the potential of, by starting billing on October 1st, you have some time where people are going to be under billed for a short period of time until we can actually go out and true up that inventory. So, that's, we just want you to know that. So, people will get their initial bill, and then, over the next, you know, couple of months, it will likely change because they may have more trash carts than we think they do. So, our, so, our plan would be to start charging everyone, you know, at one rate, right? So, at one, at one cart. And the final, option C there is, you know, that certainly is an option, status quo. It, it creates a pretty significant deficit, but also, it really helps us in no way make any progress on our refuse situation. So, again, our recommendation would be option B as we go forward, our revised staff recommendation. Again, at the end of this year, we will have instituted monthly billing. We will complete our trash cart inventory to true up what we actually should be billing folks in the community. We will update accounts in order to reflect that. And so, that system will be, be developed and structured, and we'll have that available to us. And then, next year, we would recommend that we continue the process, the slow process towards revenue self-sufficiency for this program. So, I'm going to stop there, and maybe we can have a discussion about that rate, the recommendation we have, and take any questions you have.
Councilmember Wilder.
Just so, just so I can make it sound clear. So, the current rate, this right now is $9.17.
That's right.
So, the recommendation would maintain that even if it changed the trash can, in the nature of, of not charge that traditional fee in this time period, but keep the same rate of $9.17.
Yeah, so, I do, that's, that's a really good point. I do want to clarify that if, at the, it's at the larger sized can, rate for the larger sized can. So, you have, you also have a smaller can that we, that we, you know, have a lesser rate, you know, so that we would, there would be some, potentially an increase there, but that's.
But normally.
Yeah.
If you have a larger can, it's normally $9.17.
That's right.
And that, that's normal.
October 1st, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hagelsohn.
Thank you. I guess there's lots of, you know, the, the difference between B and C seems the same money charged, but it really, like, if somebody, for example, had a small can that would pay $4.58 if you did it per month, it's now $9 per month, right? If somebody didn't even have a can because they recycled, because they brought their stuff to the dump, you know, once a month and utilized the, the 500, so then, they would be, begin to be charged even though they're not using trash, right? Is that where the extra money, because it seems like you're billing people the same between option B and C, right? The difference is, before, you were having people that weren't paying because they weren't, didn't have a can and didn't have a decal because of whatever reason, and you probably didn't pick it up very frequently. You may have picked it up one time or twice, after which, you had a flag on there and you wouldn't pick it up anymore because they didn't have a decal. So, I'm trying, when you're charging the same, I mean, one, that would be a huge difference for somebody who's putting away very little trash that had the small can of $55, which is $4.58 a month, jumping it almost, will double to $9.17, right? Is that, do you want to answer that one first? That's the.
Well, the fee is for the totality of the service.
Yep.
It's not just residential collection. It's for recycling, which actually went up by $100,000 this year that we put in the budget. It's for the, paying for the convenience center, manning that, hauling that.
So, I'm not, I'm not getting all that, what I'm, I'm just getting into the difference between B and C.
Sure.
So, if we're paying, B and C, if you pay C as a one lump sum as a decal, or if you pay B every month in your bill, it's the same dollar amount.
That's right.
The difference of $140,000 deficit versus $260,000 deficit, you're looking at $122,000, 100% almost increase in the deficit. Why is that?
Yeah, so, great question, and I think your analysis is spot on in that. So, one of the things that we said very early on is that we need, that there needs to be a standard fee regardless of the size of the can, right? And the reason for that is that, if you look at the, the fixed cost of the service, right? So, the, the folks to man the trucks, the, to run the trucks, of course, you know, diesel fuel goes up and down, but you're using about the same amount of fuel all the time. Those fixed costs are really, pretty much about 90% of what the cost is. And so, it doesn't really matter whether you have a smaller can with, with lesser volume or a larger can with more volume. About 90% of that cost is about the same, because it just costs so much to, to deliver or to, to collect the trash. So, so, that's what we said, I think we were really clear early on about, that was our intent of, that's how we're going to structure this system. And in fact, we, if you remember, we originally said we're going to have a much larger can, one size can, but we said, okay, we'll have multiple sized cans, and it's going to be a convenience to have a smaller can if you'd like it, right? So, the actual cost of service for us, for a larger can versus a smaller can is really very minimal.
And I guess that's where I'm a little, because I was here when it first started, because the original premise was the fact that, you know, you pay less because you're using less trash and throwing away less stuff, which means it's encouraging recycling, it's encouraging stewardship, it's encouraging all these things. And now, it seems like a complete 180, because now 90% is fixed cost. As you're driving down, I understand that concept, you're driving there, whether that you pick up a pound or 500 pounds, it's somewhat irrelevant. So, it seems like it's kind of completely gone to 180. So, so, what you'd be doing is going the increase from somebody paying $4.58 a month, doubling it to $9.17. Is that the only difference? What about folks that say, hey, I'm bringing my trash, you don't have to pick it up, I realize the fixed cost of driving by there?
Yep, yep, absolutely. So, so, great question. So, if you remember, when we talked about this before, I think we were really clear about, pretty much, everyone who's eligible is going to get, get the service. And I think, because it's, like, like you said, you're still driving by, you still have the option, you still have the potential to put it out.
And, and that's where I got, I guess I do have lots of problems with option B. I mean, because it's still the same, you know, it was originally somewhat of a utility that said, you know, if you pay it, here's what you use, here's what you get. So, now, it's, if somebody uses it or not, there's, you're still charging them, so, thank you.
Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got my, I guess I'm thinking about this in context of budget, because council already had previously decided that they wanted to implement this. So, from a policy standpoint, council wants to do this. I think that the questions we have to ask now, is it the right time to do it? Option C is, I think this is just yet another change and another, and another burden that could be, they could weigh on somebody, and that, that concerns me. But, it puts a $262,000 hole in our budget, and that concerns me as well, because we already know that we've got a budget shortfall. Option A seems untenable to me, which was what our initial decision was, to increase by 1502 per month. And, and I think that's just, that's a, that's a heavy hit. It's going to affect a lot of people, and the, and the implementation date is somewhat arbitrary. I know you need that for 18 months, and that's probably to get the inventory in. So, the, the engineer in me is just trying to solve a problem and figure out which the simplest way to do this is. Doing some quick math, you know, really, the $9.17 and the 1502 are about the same, about equated for revenue. I guess it's $140,000 short when you match it up, but if you just round it up to a $10 fee, it's flat. Why don't we do option B at a $10 fee, flat fee per month, and call it done?
I think we'd be fine with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me ask, do we need to pull these down in front of us?
Pull what down?
Pull the microphones.
Oh, you guys don't have microphones down there.
Yeah, very sorry about that. Yes. Can I have, you know what, Councilmember Nelson, our, yeah, technical folks are coming. Thank you. I was looking at you like, what are we pulling, what are you pulling down? Okay, thank you.
I ask that because I expect that they're going to be in use a good part of this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I really do appreciate what Councilmember Perrow has said about not imposing burdens. It's, it's a question of our city budget and balancing it versus burdens on our citizens. And this is a tough time to add any additional burden on anybody, whether it's an individual or a business. So, I'm, I'm not enthusiastic about raising any rates at this point. It's not a tax, it's a fee, it's based on use, but if you use it very little, it's just as burdensome as a tax, because you have to pay it and you don't have the option and the discretion not to use it or not to pay for it. I am contrary to anything that discourages recycling and environmental consciousness, and to have a single fee regardless of the cart size on citizens means they lose a specific consciousness to trying to be efficient and save. So, I am not in favor of the option A. Option C has some appeals in as much as it is not as big a burden, but again, it doesn't address some of those other issues. So, for those reasons, I would be in favor of option B, and I think Councilmember Perrow's suggestion with regard to a flat $10 is probably makes some reasonable prudence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Anyone regarding the options presented by city staff?
Maybe there could be a motion to give us that direction.
Right.
Where's my list? Because this is on the list, right?
Yes.
This is item 19, I believe, nine, 20, item 20B. 20, option B with the flat fee of $10 per month.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, any further discussion? Councilmember Perrow.
I don't like, I don't like the idea of increasing it, increasing the rate here. That has been the plan for the city. I'd rather not do it, but it's a whole lot better than what the city was planning, was a $15 a month. So, this is a, it's just about a 33% reduction in that initial proposed fee. And so, if we do a 33% reduction on that fee, I think that helps. It's a modification of the plan that we had approved. I think it's a benefit to our citizens. It is changed during a time of turmoil, which, like I said, I'm sensitive about that, but they don't have to go out and buy trash tags, and I think it's a more equitable situation, because everybody is, at this point, contributing to the removal of trash instead of just those people that choose to buy trash tags. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. One follow-up clarification. In talking about the inventory, is the inventory important to make sure that persons eventually get charged the appropriate amount for the size of the cart? Or is it so that the city knows what, what the number of our carts are in case someone wants to change?
Yeah, great question.
From one to the other.
I think it's both. I think we want to make sure that people are paying fairly, but I also think we really need to have a good inventory to know what, where our assets are and what we need, so, that's really key.
Couldn't the inventory of those who have carts be gradually accomplished by the drivers of the collection vehicles, just periodically checking a certain quantity in a certain neighborhood and see if it corresponds with what the records show?
Yeah, so, that's a great idea. I, I will just say that I've had the opportunity a number of, number of times to ride the garbage truck and spend a day or two doing that, and I will say that those guys need to be on it all the time. So, I think, I think our, our plan is more to take some, you know, some of our folks that could be redeployed just for a short period of time and do certain sectors, sectors of the city at, at different times, just to make sure that the guys that are, the guys and ladies that are, that are picking up trash aren't, don't have an additional burden. But, I think it's, I mean, it's a point well taken, but I think we have a different point.
And the reason I say that, I appreciate your answer, is some time ago, when we began to rely on GIS accounting and inventory for other reasons, understood there was mechanisms on the truck that could identify a decal and register whether it is an appropriate decal, the proper size of the, of the cart, and a number of other things that were of interest to your department. And I would think it'd be easy enough to, if you've got that equipment on the truck, to scan the decal or scan the can and see if it matches up on the computers.
Yeah, yeah, great point. And I think that's our, that's our hope in the future to, to implement that. We don't have that capacity at this point, but, but I think that's one thing that we definitely, that's right. Yeah, good, good point.
Can I, can I get to Councilmember Wright first? Is it relevant to the point?
Just a point of information.
Okay, go right ahead.
This does, the $10 doesn't equalize exactly. There's actually a shortfall of a penny and a third. So, there would still be a little bit of a gap there, but it's going to be like 1,400 bucks, is that right?
Yeah, we calculated about 2,500, but we'll call it a day.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, thank you. Council.
My question, I wanted to hear from Mrs. Witt about what the number was going to be.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Dolan.
My question was answered.
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hagelsohn.
Okay, Councilmember Hagelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, with this, option B, I understand, but I have two major problems with it, and I will not be voting for it. Last year, if you all remember, there was a 37.5% increase on the bill, right, for the decal. So, somebody last year who was paying $40 on their bill went up 37.5% that, one that had the small cart, went from a $40 cart to the last, this year, now it's a $55 cart. Now, if, if we go to option B, they won't have the option of keeping their $55 bill, it's going to go to 110. So, you're going from $40 to 110. Going from this year, the 55 to 110, that's a doubling, that's a 200% increase. So, we're not saying that we're not increasing it if you approve this motion. You're actually doubling it on the folks that had the smallest input into the system with regarding the smallest amount of trash that was being put in because they had the small cart. Secondly, those that were being stewards, those that were being judicious and, and recycled and didn't utilize the cart are now going to be charged just because they have a water bill. So, I'm not going to be voting for it for those two main reasons. You're, you're doubling the price on the, the folks that were really cutting their, their costs by having the smallest can. You're going 200% increase on that. Those that didn't use it at all are now going to be forced to do it just by virtue of having a water bill. So, one, you're going a double 200% increase, and the other, you go from zero to $9.17. So, it's more than, and you can't, don't even know how you do the percentage of an increase, but you're going 1,000% increase on that person, so.
All right, thank you. And I am ready, if there's no further discussion, to call for the vote. Vice Mayor Dolan.
I just have a question for Reed. Looking at the overall picture, we're not just talking about trash that are in the containers. We're talking about other refuse around the city, like brush and leaves and all that. That's all compiled together, right? So, it's not like, if it's on your utility bill, it's not like you're not getting any service if you're not using the trash, because you also have other things that you could be putting in the street for pickup rates.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if there's no further discussion, I'll now call for the vote. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hagelsohn.
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I will be voting for this as well. So, the motion passes with option B, and thank you very much with Councilmember Perrow's request.
Could we clarify what date this is?
Is it going to begin? I know you had some different.
It's going to be October 1st.
Of this year, or in 2022, it looked like you had?
20, it should be 2020.
2020.
Did I write the wrong date? It's 2020?
Beginning 2020.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 21, October.
So, this be, and then, in 2022, your proposal is another, okay.
There likely could potentially be additional increases.
Got it.
So, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Hart, who's going to talk about the next part.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Nobody responded.
Obviously, the present condition of brush and bulk is not satisfactory to you or to, even to us. The lack of structure to brush and bulk leaves excessive setouts, unpredictable setouts, and this is primarily with bulk items. Some citizens actually put brush and bulk out almost every week. So, we're picking it up 52 weeks a year. I mean, they might have to wait, but then, it affects service of other folks that don't use it as much. Our goal here was to simplify our processes so citizens could understand the expectations and be able to remain in compliance easily, and that would help us to keep our city clean, which I do believe citizens truly do want. The brush and bulk education and enforcement employee is very important and critical to us solving this issue. Our past experience of, of adding an education and enforcement employee for the weekly refuse has been successful. We actually repurposed another position in public works to create that position to tackle overflow and other compliance issues. And we have seen a huge improvement in compliance. Right now, during COVID-19, we've seen a huge increase in overflow, and we're just trying to work with that and accommodate that at some level. But, before COVID-19, we see, we saw a huge improvement in our compliance in that area. I know you guys have seen these pictures before, but again, just to reiterate some of the issues that we have with compliance, and these are recent pictures, not old pictures. This is a case where brush and bulk should have been, I'm sorry, brush, bulk should have been separate from trash. The smaller items should have been bagged in the prepaid bag, plastic bags, and this should have been moved away with, away from the guardrail. These are some, some typical compliance issues. This is a situation where we have bulk mixed in with bags and boxes, and what happens when the knuckle boom comes to pick that up? Those bags and boxes burst and create a litter problem, which requires our guys to stay there and try to clean it up rather than to move on to the next stop. This is a case of people mixing brush with bulk, and what happens here is this will have to go entirely to landfill. We hire, we treat brush separately from trash. Brush is actually stored, ground, and it is, a local, a local vendor uses it to create compost and soils. So, this would have been something that went entirely to landfill instead of being, some of it being repurposed. This is a situation of just household trash being strewn on our right-of-way. This all should have been in a prepaid bag or in a trash cart, and these are the kind of situations that we run into every single day.
And I, please, no, I'll let you.
I mean, why isn't that borderline criminal?
Well, and we are, we are considering. Well, and we are considering that, and you will see something like that in a proposed ordinance either next week or in the very, very new future. So, we are considering something like that, that this would be a, there would be a stiff fee for getting this cleaned up.
At very least, as a nuisance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's litter. I guess you can't, can you litter on private property?
No. The community development handles private property complaints as it relates to litter, and they deal with those complaints, but we try to work with them to resolve them.
But I think the more important thing here is that we just have this lack of structure that we feel like we need to change, right? And we need to, and this is part of this conversation.
And so, the future, you just mentioned the possibility of fines or something like that, would be assessed to the homeowner?
Yeah, I think initially, you know, I think education will come before enforcement. So, it would be, my thought would be is we try to work with this homeowner to get into compliance. In other words, if you will bag your stuff and set this out correctly the first time, you will avoid the fee, but then after that, we need something more than that if people continually continue to violate the ordinance. So, that would be kind of my thinking is start out with education. If you get this set out correctly, we'll work with you, and then after that, consider a fee or a fine.
And these pictures are being broadcast to our community. I'm just making sure that our technical folks are putting this okay, because this is too much. This is irresponsible, and it's not personal accountability for you who either owns it or lives there. And I know we're just focusing on one picture. You've shown several, but we ride throughout the city and see this, and people want it fixed. We had a recent story about bulk and brush of people who were just setting out small amounts, and then I don't think they see the other side of what you all are picking up and the constant problem that it causes in scheduling, but this is just too much. So, that's just my opinion. Okay, Councilmember Wilder.
Again, the majority of my calls for the Board Two is about bulk trash, and a lot of times, I'm going to say it's property rental property, whether he's evicted or set stuff out, but the majority of the calls, I get calls every weekend. I've called you so many times, I apologize, but I call, I send a note to the manager, and she sends it to you continuously about neighbors complaining about something like that outside of the house, which is just horrible.
Yes, I agree.
And can you just clarify? Thank you, Councilmember Wilder, because the last conversation we had, we said, or we were told, that it was not people renovating or that because people, we thought it was maybe some, a lot of eviction type of things going on, but you all found out differently? Or...
Yes, the clarification on that is the term eviction is a legal term, and the sheriff actually serves someone when they're evicted. And so, we have a section in City Code that addresses that where the landlord can put the private property that is left out on the right-of-way. Those were not the issues. They were not the ones basically creating issues. We think that it's people flipping houses potentially. They buy a home, it's full of junk, and they're trying to improve it and renovate it, so they set all the stuff out. Or it could just be somebody who is moving on and is just choosing to move somewhere else, and they just set their stuff out. So, it might not, it could be a landlord that is setting this out, but it's not an official eviction, a legal eviction where people are served. So, that's the clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelsohn.
This is obviously horrendous, and it's been going on for at least 15, 16 years. And so, you know, each, we kind of bring this up, and then we come up with maybe a solution, and right now, obviously with the, maybe with the pandemic, people are at home. It's probably, but it's without question the worst I've ever seen it. I mean, because it's not just a little bit now. It's all over. I mean, it's pervasive, not just, as Sterling mentioned, not just down in Ward Two. It comes up in Ward Three. It's all the way out, winds or hills. It's all over, and there's places everywhere where people are doing this. So, what, hopefully what we'll get to is something, because we've been talking about this for 16 years, sometimes I realize maybe the evictions weren't the actual thing, but what are we doing now to actually make a difference on this tomorrow? I mean, as opposed to, it sounds like you said there's going to be something later. I mean, this has been kind of the challenge. I've called in numerous ones of these over the years, because I hear from neighbors that are like, my gosh, we're mowing our yard and somebody's doing this. So, what's happening quickly with this?
Well, I think, I appreciate the question. Hopefully, again, next week, we're going to bring an ordinance to you that is going to have more teeth in it. It's going to clarify what people can and can't send out. It's actually going to have a size in it of what, how big the pile can be and what types of things it can contain. And then there is a proposal for a potential fee or fine for non-compliance. So, those are some of the things that we plan to do in the future. We would definitely like to add another knuckle boom truck. Right now, we've only got three out, and we try to pull one from another place in Public Works to add four out, and that is problematic for us, so that's something else we'll need to work on in the future. But I think with the new ordinance that we bring to you, you're going to see some additional teeth that will allow us to, allow this enforcement person to really take some steps for citizens that continue to do this to feel some pain.
And I appreciate that, and I know you haven't been the Public Works Director for the whole time, but it's been a long time. And so, if there's a, if there is a solution, like whether it be an ordinance or whether it be something, is there a reason it didn't come up 15 years ago, or is it because it's getting worse, or has there been new state legislation that allows something different?
I believe it's because it's been getting worse and worse. I believe some of it could be to more properties becoming rental properties perhaps. It could be around that, but it has been getting worse and worse, and I noticed it. And so, again, about two years ago, I got permission, and we threw together a Public Works, or actually citywide task force to start looking at what we could do to change this, because I think it's going to keep getting worse and worse if we don't try to tackle it now.
And I realize it's not just the property owner. I mean, obviously, the property owner rents it out to somebody. I've seen people in neighborhoods that are renting a place, and rather than packing up the stuff, and they just threw everything to the curb that were a renter. So, it's not, you know, I think that eviction type thing may have said, hey, focused on somebody who wasn't there as opposed to the actual person that's doing it. So...
Correct.
I hope the ordinance is something with the actual person that is doing it as opposed to saying, you know, putting, pinning the tail on, you know, somebody else that didn't do it.
And we'll try to work to that point. Oftentimes landlords are out of town, but certainly our first step will be to the occupant that did this, if we can find them, and so that'll be another issue if somebody moves somewhere else. I don't know that we can always find them, but that, certainly that's our first step is to work with whoever is occupying the premises and set the bulk or brush out.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just curious if you all have the statistics of how many tons of bulk waste you are picking up on an annual basis?
Yes, we do. I did not bring that with us. If I recall, we do about, I do know a monthly amount, 200 to 250 tons a month on average. So...
And the service roughly costs us how much?
I would need to separate that out, and I would have to actually look at the number of employees assigned and look at that disposal rate, but we could get that for you.
Yeah, I think it should be interesting to be able to put some metrics around exactly what the cost is to the community to provide this service, even in its current form.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and I think it's insightful to have these vivid visuals to illustrate what you all deal with on a regular basis. I see we have on the list two options. I assume the only difference between the two options is that the new employee will start on October 1st rather than immediately on whatever day in July they would otherwise start. And I do think if that's the case, it's appropriate to have someone who can acquaint themselves with a new ordinance, which has not been enacted yet, and delay that implementation until some staggered time. So, Madam Mayor, I would move the motion to, for option, option number two, which has the delayed beginning of it, which will enforce whatever ordinance if we choose to pass it.
All right. Is there a second?
I'm not sure what the ordinance is looking at.
There's just, I see just a PowerPoint.
I'm sorry.
Is it on the list?
On the list, number, item number 21.
Can I ask you clarifying?
Yes, Councilmember Perrow.
Just go ahead a second. I don't know if...
All right, thank you.
Clarifying point for that, I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, for stepping on your toes if you wanted to, but maybe, what I see is that there's 49,740 already listed in the budget, but I see the strike-throughs that have been made by the city. So, we're looking at now 36,405, and then another $900, and then I guess, oh, and then $1,200. No, so I want to make sure that number's right. What is the, what is the amount that we're talking about, the revised budget amount? It seems to be less than 49,740.
Yeah, because the savings is 1,435.
Okay, so the num, so there's actually a savings involved in that. So, to accept item...
37,305.
To accept item number two, we would slide over into council decision, the 37,305, did you say?
37,305.
Whatever that number was, 49,000 minus 12,000. Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, did you have any further discussion?
No, and I know I may have preempted the agenda, but I think we were ready to move forward with it.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. And any further discussion or thoughts from other council members? All right, I am, thank you. Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you. Waiting for the, so I guess what this motion is, is saying putting it on the list or approving it as a, is that what you're saying, Councilmember Nelson? I mean, saying that this new position would supersede maybe any other positions or...
This new position is going to be in place and do exactly the same thing, but it will not start until October 1st, and it will operate under a new ordinance if we do choose to enact a new ordinance. Otherwise, it looks like the job will be that of inventorying and inspecting conditions and seeing if there's a violation and what needs to be done to clean up neighborhoods.
And so, as a reminder, this position was included in the manager's proposed budget, and so this action would actually be a savings.
Savings of 12,000 some.
But in the first budget or the second budget?
Second budget.
In the second budget, it was in there too?
It was in both.
Yeah, yeah, it's in both, yeah.
Okay. I guess just the one thing, I can appreciate this, I'm just, it would be nice to see the ordinance of what they're going to be enforcing in conjunction with the person. So, I think we should wait with that, especially in light of the fact that maybe we have some other personnel that may be critical as well at this time with regarding public safety. So, I think it would be best for us to put this off once we actually see the ordinance of what they are actually going to be doing, so...
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to respond to that. I think we already have an ordinance, and if we engage this individual, this individual will focus on the current ordinance. If we change it, they'll enforce the change ordinance, but either way, it's a position that's needed as these photos clearly demonstrate.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
I was going to say the same thing. I think it's needed now, and unfortunately, I think, you know, I agree that we should probably delay it, but I wouldn't want to push it back too far.
Thank you. And I have a question, because we may see another, some additional language for an ordinance later, and you mentioned community development. So, when people, especially investors, are coming to the community and potentially renovating and setting out, we still have the inspection process by which, you know, and I'm just wondering, I'm thinking out loud, is there any way to include in that process of inspection and the final approval if there's been complaints of trash or if they, along with that process of inspecting properties for a potential rental, that sort of thing? That we can include the expectation, the requirement that they do private service to take away anything? I'm just asking as a legal perspective and...
So, certainly, community development, we can evaluate that option. You know, our statewide building code is pretty clearly governs what we can do, so we can, we will certainly evaluate that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
I was going to say earlier was that when we do the work with the compliance team and we go through the neighborhoods, myself and Vice Mayor Dolan, we go through, the majority of times, we see issues like that. Usually, they're out-of-state owners, out-of-town owners, mainly they're, either they're rehabbing or they are rental property, and you'll get persons who've been living there for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and they'll say, this house next door, the people have died, and now somebody's taken over the property, and now it's been rented out, and now we have this. And you see a beautiful property, and then you see something like that next door to it. And we go through the compliance, all through this, when we do those walkthroughs to the community, it happens so many times. The grass is up to here. I mean, it's ridiculous. So, we report as much as we can based on the law, we try to do what we can. So, I'm thankful for the compliance team, where we get those issues continuously.
All right, thank you. So, Councilmember Hegelsohn, and then we'll be calling for the vote.
One other question. A few, a year or so ago, there were some other folks that may have been part-time that converted to full-time that were going around and some, giving summons for trash, obviously not the brush and bulk. Is that something that that person could be doing as they're going around, giving summonses for picking up the trash, seeing the cans, now utilize as they're going around, writing up the summons of serving this rather than adding a brand-new person?
Yeah, that, the weekly refuse compliant employee has more than he can say grace over now. He can barely make it around the city one time to check properties for overflow. Sometimes he'll make it twice, so it is just, there is no way. We need someone actually dedicated to this brush and bulk problem and that can really work with people and spend the time to work with citizens to get this into compliance.
And I realize everything is about priorities, you know. To me, that is a priority over somebody having their trash can slightly ajar that has a little bit more. It'd be nice if that person that has lots to do, I realize, if they could be doing that kind of stuff as opposed to the other. So, you know, I would hope we could find some efficiencies. I appreciate that, and I, more than anybody, I want to see that gone, but having another position when there could be other things, and especially in this time, I don't think I can support it as the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call for the vote. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsohn.
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And aye, aye, have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you.
So, just finishing up really quickly, well, no, I was going to go to the timeline real quick. We got past the PowerPoint, so that's great. So, just really quickly, on our presentation, we tentatively have scheduled again, as we mentioned a couple of times, next week to review that ordinance that we've discussed a couple of times. May through September of this year, we will execute a very substantial communications plan that will make sure that all of our community knows exactly what's going on, what's happening, and then that new billing rate will go into effect October 1st, as well as the brush and bulk procedures. So, thank you very much. I'm glad to have it done.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we're a couple of minutes ahead on that. That's very good for us. All right, thank you. Next, we'll begin to address council's fiscal year 2021 proposed budget list. Ms. Verchek and Ms. Witt.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, you have a, an updated list in front of you, and I want to first refer to page one of three items, 11 and 12. Two items requested, well, a couple of items actually requested by the registrar. They are nominal amounts, and if council so desires, I heard last week there was some interest in funding these. These items can be funded out of the city manager's discretionary fund this year. So, if you're in agreement, we could, if you're in agreement, we can call it a day and move on to the next item.
All right. The Councilmember Wright.
I certainly agree. I'm wondering how much, once this, if council agrees to this, how much will be remaining in the manager's discretionary fund?
I think about $24,000.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor, by the way.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or thoughts? All right, so we seemingly are in agreement. Councilmember Hegelsohn has stepped away, but he's getting water. Councilmember Hegelsohn, we're all in agreement for 11 and 12. The voter registrar's office needs to be taken off the list for removal. Any thoughts?
Be funded by the manager's discretionary.
Right.[1790.72]
They're nominal amounts, they can be funded this year.
All right, thank you.
Great, yes. Page two, item number nineteen, option one, option two, option three, and option four. We gave you four different options regarding the funding of the nine full-time firefighters. And I'll ask Reed or the chief to comment or answer any questions you have on those options.
Okay. Yeah, so, so we, we wanted to put together a couple of options for you with the intent of trying to get this additional medic unit in service, number one, as soon as we could, but doing so, understanding the financial challenges that we potentially have. So option one was the original request, which is nine full-time firefighters starting in July, that their funding would start in July. That would cost five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Option two is nine full-time firefighters beginning January first, twenty twenty-one. So this would be a six-month delay. Again, the idea here is to kind of get, get the unit in service during the year. Hopefully, it could be sooner than that, but, but financially, that would, that would allow you to do it. That would cost an additional two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. One thing I want to note is that when you do, when you add positions halfway through a year, you've got to remember the next year, you have a full year worth of pay, pay you got to pay them through. So you've got to think about that. So you're sort of in the hole for the next year already. So just want to be clear about that. Option three we have is six full-time firefighters starting July first. And option four would be six full-time firefighters starting October first, which would cost two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And one before that was three hundred and fifty-three. So I think the chief probably can speak to, to these, these effects much, much better than I can. But these are, these are additional expenditures that we did not account for. But we know that this is important to council and at least to have a conversation and would take into account any, any feedback you might have. Chief, you have?
Thank you. And while the chief's coming, Councilmember Wright, I saw your hand. Did you have something?
I suspect that the, the chief may answer my questions. I'll hold until after he's, he's had a chance to present.
All right, thank you.
I'm Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thanks for having me again. So as the deputy city managers pointed out, there's certainly some ways that we can sort of finesse the process as we move forward. Additionally, I know that Councilmember Nelson had asked a question about the change in overtime funding, which would equate to about eighty thousand dollars. That's very anecdotal, that's not, not a promise, that's not something that we can guarantee. That is certainly something that we surmise would be an additional saving. So you can add that to the numbers that you see on the screen and on the presentation, that we would save about eighty thousand dollars in overtime. So the other thing I'd point out is that when all of this started, when we made this initial presentation to you all back many months ago, prior to COVID, obviously, as the superintendent of schools has pointed out several times in her great budget message, I think it's important to note that at that time, we certainly were confident in our presentation and confident that we would be able to come to a point in time where we'd have those nine firefighters. That being said, we would have started that process by now, because we would have known where we stood by now. So every day that we don't start that process, two things happen. A, we don't have the firefighters here. B, we're saving a little bit of money. So, you know, it takes a long time to get them onboarded, to run through a process. And we could be looking at October, at the earliest, before we could even have anybody hired, never mind actually boots-on-the-ground delivering the service day in and day out. So it's quite a bit of wiggle room here. I know there's still, you know, tremendous amount of uncertainty with finances and economics, and certainly respect and understand that. But know that the nine firefighters are very necessary to deliver the service, to make sure that our response times are appropriate, to make sure that we're delivering an effective service to our citizens. You know, again, all of those things that we have discussed previously. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Councilmember Wilder had a question, or Councilmember Wright?
Sorry, thank you. So can you just explain to us the, the practical implications of the difference between six and nine firefighters?
Yeah, so the practical implications is this, if we hire six, we don't have a relief factor for those six. We already don't have a relief factor across the department. So if you remember, we discussed that the nine firefighters are necessary now because it builds in a relief factor for new hires. Additionally, we need another eleven firefighters to build in a relief factor for the rest of our staff that are already working. That just sort of gets us started and gets us moving in the right direction. So the reason for the nine versus the six is because we need that opportunity to be able to provide a proper relief factor for the remainder of the staff, for the staff that are both working on that unit and for other staff members that are in the department. And so it does make a big difference. If we add six, certainly wonderful, but then we'd have to very quickly add three and then an additional eleven at some point later on down the line.
Just to make up the difference.
Just to make up the difference. So we're continuing to sort of kick that can down the road a little bit, respectfully. And so I think that's why it's so important to find some common ground that we can sort of, at least begin to move forward so that we can start to build the staff and the resources that we need to have.
Okay, thank you. And then can I, can I just ask a question of the, of this, of the administrative staff? So if we were to do this in January, and then we've got the full year's worth of funding that we would need to come up with next year, do you feel confident that we could find that five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for, for another, for another year's worth of salary benefits?
Well, it would be an additional half of that. I mean, who knows what revenues are going to?
I mean, we, obviously, we don't know, but.
I want to know where we are January first.
My recommendation would be to put this on the future list that we would review in January, along with some other things that you've already decided to put on the future list. There is no doubt that this is needed. We said that when I presented my budget message in the beginning of March. It was a matter of resources. And now we're even more resource constrained. So until we have a better idea of what revenues are looking like for the future, I'm hesitant to commit to anything.
Sure. Thanks.
And Councilmember Perrow, thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Did Councilmember Wilder?
Yeah, I just realized.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were pointing to him. Okay, Councilmember Wilder, sorry.
Thank you, appreciate it. This question, you kind of touched on a little bit, but as far as the training portion, what is the training time? You said there's a lag, so what's the training time?
That's a great question. So, you know, for this type of unit, we would certainly be interested in hiring already experienced providers, so providers already that have been in the field somewhere else. And so the training time would be a little bit less or be compressed, maybe to, you know, four to six weeks, depending on their capability, depending on their experience. We've done this in the past, we've found it to be effective. We continue to sort of revise our process and evolve in how we do things to make sure that we're providing the best opportunities for our folks to succeed. So for the experienced provider class, we'd be looking at, you know, four to six weeks. If we had to run a full recruit academy, you could be looking at some twenty, nineteen to twenty-one weeks, depending on the circumstances.
Okay. So, so for these, do you feel comfortable in getting at least a six normally, as far as hiring by October?
So if I understand your question, do I feel comfortable getting six experienced providers by October?
I don't know what the market is like.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know the market.
The market's not good. There's an increased supply and not, there's increased demand and not a great supply, unfortunately. So that's across the nation, unfortunately. So, so is the market good? The answer to your question is not great. Can we get six? Probably, we could get six experienced providers, for sure. But again, you know, I want to remind you that we need the additional three, because that eighty thousand, by the way, just as sort of a side note that we talked about in savings and overtime, that counts on those three being here. So if we don't have those three, and all we have is six, we're actually going to exacerbate the problem. So we're going to continue to increase our overtime funding. It, it is all based on market, for sure. So we could advertise and get three or four, which we'd be very thankful for. And believe me, we'd put them to work right away. If we did that, our plan would then be to move forward with a traditional, what we call a traditional recruit academy, which would start in January. That's typically when we start our recruit academies, and we would just start a traditional recruit academy in January, where we'd have a full hiring process, run a full recruit school, and train all of our employees.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And chief, I really do appreciate your presentation and clarification on all of that. I think anybody who has listened to our citizens for any period of time is quite aware that the Timberlake, Ward's Road, Grays Mill Road portion of the city is probably the most expanding and growing congested part of the city. And is it correct that that is going to be where these services will be primarily directed?
Absolutely. So, you know, the one positive about the city's growth is that the city's growing. The one negative is that we have to invest in the city while it continues to grow, and this is one way we can do that. So yes, this medic unit would be in the Timberlake Road area, where that area is rapidly growing, where we're seeing a tremendous increase in call volume and, and a service that's much needed, for sure.
Well, there's no doubt that there is presently an actual demand for these services in that area. And based on what I see coming through the planning commission, requests for additional construction, it's not going to go away. So this is a responsibility the city does, I think, have. The question is, when do, when do we do it and how do we do it? And there, there are two ways, in my mind, that we could deal with something tonight. The first is to deal with the list and cut some other things so as to free up funding for this program to go forward. Or we can simply postpone the decision until a time to, that we get a better pulse on our economy and see what our revenue sources are. I would, I would like to do a little bit of both. But I don't feel comfortable giving, given the congregation and demand of our population in that part of the city, to put it off as long as January first. I'd like to take a look at it on October first, when we're looking at other things, so as to be able to give ourselves the opportunity, if the economy is revived and we've got increased revenues, and we know that that'll be helpful, and likewise, tonight, in the list process, we can also look at with a very critical eye other issues that may provide partial funding for. So I would move that we entertain the adoption of, of the full nine and place it on the list for review on October first.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. And Councilmember Nelson, do you have any further conversation or thoughts?
I initially did not understand the need for nine. If it takes six to operate the, the vehicle, I assume we already have the vehicle.
We do already have the vehicle, that's correct.
So this would generate some savings, and it, once it goes into action, some savings with regard to eliminating approximately eighty thousand in overtime and reduce the stress on the rest of our firefighters who are having to carry a heavy load in every respect of all the variety of things that they do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan, any further thoughts?
Not really. I just think that this is something that, that has to be done, and probably the sooner the better.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder, I have a question afterwards. Councilmember Wilder?
What is your motion? Is it for January? I'm just trying to be clear.
No, October.
It's October.
October one.
Okay. I didn't hear that from January, okay.
Well, one of the options was January first.
It's October, October the first for the nine.
Based on what Ms. Witt has said regarding the ability to assess the economy, somewhere in late August to first of October should give us a feel for whether we're coming out of the pandemic or whether or not we're still deep in the heart of it.
Okay, I think.
Now, question, I have a question because, and, and this is just, we're talking six, and then we're talking nine, you need to explain that. Now, there's a little public confusion here, because somewhere, the people are thinking that you need sixty-nine firefighters. So can you clarify that? Or what is the conversation out there with the public that you need sixty-nine firefighters?
Yeah, so I think what that refers to is a standard called NFPA seventeen-ten. So that's the National Fire Protection Agency seventeen-ten. And although, as you know, in our standard of cover document that we shared, we certainly want to and strive to adhere to seventeen-ten, it's a goal. And it's not a goal that we can attain right now. So this, we're working on that goal. So as with many goals, you work on them, you try to get better, you, you see the goal, you, you try to get over that bar. And so what the sixty-nine firefighters, and I don't know exactly the number that would be correct, that relates to the amount of firefighters on fire trucks and ladder trucks. And so seventeen-ten, although there are many components and many facets of it, six chapters, to be exact, seventeen-ten is certainly something that we want to strive to achieve. So we currently achieve that in several ways. And in seventeen-ten, as we talked about, it talks about response times, turnout time, travel time, how many people you can get on the scene at a particular moment in time. So it talks about a lot of information. One of the things it talks about is staffing on fire trucks. Currently, there is not a fire department that we are aware of in the Commonwealth of Virginia that adheres to seventeen-ten as it relates to staffing. There are many fire departments who do have four people on fire trucks, for sure. But in its totality, there's no fire departments that we're aware of that adhere completely to seventeen-ten, either in its entirety or even related just to the staffing model and the amount of firefighters that are on fire trucks. So yes, as I presented to this body previously, we need more staff. Does that look like sixty-nine firefighters? That's a discussion for later. And, you know, certainly, as the fire chief, my charge is to lead this, lead the great men and women of our department and provide the best possible outcomes for our citizens, and that's what I intend to do. And if, that means that we have nine firefighters now and eleven firefighters later, and we move on from there, then that's great. My job is to make sure that I manage those resources effectively, based on the needs of the citizens and based on what council provides. So we are thankful for that. So I, I don't know if that answers that question a little bit?
Yeah, just, just thinking along it, like, what, what would that even look like as far as cost? Like, because I'm thinking, if you add that many, do you have to add fire stations? Do you have, like, what, how do you house?
Well, we could, we could have to add fire stations, for sure. That's a great point. So I think that, you know, anecdotally, if I just sort of look at the numbers based on the budget that we presented, I mean, you're looking at, you know, some, you know, three million, three and a half million dollars for an additional sixty-nine firefighters, based on numbers that we've already provided you. So, you know, I think that is significant. I think you're right, we certainly don't have some facilities that we would need in order to, to make those firefighters comfortable. So that would be a challenge, not in every fire station, but certainly in some of them. So, but as you know, you know, a fire station is something that's on my wish list.
Gotcha. Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you. I'm ready to, after the motion here. So what, your comments were really nuanced, and I found them very interesting and telling. Thank you for, for explaining it. Nine, nine positions gives you a fun, a fully-staffed ambulance with provisions for overlap or overtime, or not overtime, but provisions for, what was the term for it?
Relief factor.
Relief factor, thank you. You could have six, but then you don't have the relief factor. And we don't have the relief factor anywhere else, so that eight hundred, eighty thousand dollars' worth of overtime savings is, is gonna, not only is it gonna go away, but your overtime costs will actually go up because now you don't have the relief factor on an additional unit.
That's correct.
So that's very interesting. But also in that, said you would be happy to get, you want to work out that relief. So if, I'm just going to pick a number, this is not a proposal, but if you've got four firefighters, you might not have been able, you know, might not be able to fund the EMS unit, but you would have some relief.
Yes.
All right, so I think that's interesting, too. And my, I, I understand what Mr. Nelson's doing here. My goal is to get the nine firefighters onboard, if at all possible, and I'm, I'm going to work towards that. But I'm not ready to support this motion right now, because I think there are other areas of the list that we can go through and we can develop to see what we can come up with. And if we can come up with half a million dollars, there's your nine firefighters. If we can come up with three hundred and fifty thousand, there's your six. I'd like to work to that. So I'm not prepared to vote for this now. I would like to go through and, and state this. So I'm going to vote against this, or else I'll make a motion to, well, we'll see what council wants to do.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said, I don't, there, there are two options for funding this. One is the economy picks up and suddenly we have the revenues. The other is that we cut other things on the list. And I would agree that at this point, it puts us under a real burden to suddenly say, all right, we have six hundred thousand dollars' worth of expenses here, but we don't have that money unless we cut some other things. So tonight is, makes it difficult. That is why, precisely why, I would make the motion contingent on a decision to be made in October first, which will have all of these proceedings over with, and we'll know exactly what we have and whether or not we go forward with it. So we've got a fail-safe, so to speak, veto opportunity in October if the numbers just don't work out. But I'd like to have our eye on a target that's headed in that direction. So that's, I, I think that might console some of Councilmember Perrow's concerns, maybe not.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Hagelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as, I can appreciate that, Councilmember Nelson. But I think as Councilmember Perrow was saying, is it'd be nice to have this rectified today. but I think as Councilmember Perro was saying, is it'd be nice to have this rectified today, rather than, you know, kicking the can down, if you will, to October, and then possibly making a decision. You know, last week, when we watched the movie, and we applauded a lot of those firefighters that were in there, jumping in Greenfield Apartments, James Crossing, rescuing those children. And you look at the fact of when there have been medic units that have been out. We look at the fact that there has been lots of problems with, we now have disabilities, and PTSD, and things that we've really got to clarify. You know, when you have lots of staff that are out, we as a council need to segregate and say, what is, what do we really need? And when medic units are being called by our citizens, and they're unavailable, that isn't good. We need to figure out how to address that, whether we say, yep, we're gonna start them in this budget July 1st, for the $529,000, and find $529,000 of extraneous expenses that we can fixate on public safety. Or if we say, well, we can't do it now, but at least we can do it beginning January 1st, where we can come up with $264,000 today, to say, or within the timeframe of the budget, to say, so at least you can then be planning. Because you just said a minute ago, there's lots of need, little, lots of demand, little supply. You don't just go like this, as we've discovered with our police. You can't just say, hey, we're gonna, let's recruit 100 more police officers, because we need them, because we got a gang problem. It takes some time. And so if we begin with this, I think we should go through the budget, find where we can actually implement them. You know, I think there's lots of things that we can do if we separate, you know, things, if we take out some things that would be fat in the budget, if we take out things that are necessary versus, totally essential versus non-essential. If we can segregate and look at other departments where we can take some resources from, to say, we're gonna add these nine folks, because we, our citizens demand it. Because I think you've, and a minute ago, you talked about the standard of cover, the document, I believe, that you gave to us, that it said you needed 69 more people, according to that standard of cover. But if you compared us, not with the 1710, but you compared us with other cities, I think we're pretty far behind, aren't we?
So first of all, I don't know, I don't recall in the standard of cover, there being any mention of 69 firefighters. But yes.
I mean, in the 1710, in your document?
Yeah, in 1710, yeah, sure.
Yeah, but in the standard of-
Are we far behind? Sure. That's why I'm asking for nine firefighters, plus an additional 11. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So if we can get to that this budget year, rather than, you know, putting it off to a new decision by a new council in October, I think that's gonna help. You know, there's other things, and I mentioned this before, in the police department budget. When somebody sees, the staff, the boots on the ground sees a light at the end of the tunnel, I think that's helpful. It helps them to stay. It helps them to say, you know, council cares. Council is gonna divert resources to make sure we're at least on a path, that we're gonna be hiring some new people, so maybe I'm not gonna jump ship and go leave this career. And so hopefully, you could, some of the good officers that are out there, some of the good medic units are able to stay, if we say, yep, here's what we're doing, and we're actually quantifying it in the budget. So although I appreciate Councilmember Nelson's desire to make sure it's there in a discussion in October, I'd rather see something quantified. And I think we can quantify it. So I'll be voting against that motion, unless you'd rather, you know, pull it, and figure out a way if we can go through the budget and come back with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I do appreciate the nuance of Councilmember Higginson's point, and that is, that at this point, my position is that we make a decision, and we go forward with this, with the option, if the economy completely tanks, and the estimates of revenues are totally out of line, and we do not have any of the money that we think we might have, then we could pull the plug. But I am not metaphorically kicking any can down any road. I'm saying, let's go forward with it, and then we'll look and see. Now, to the extent that there are other things in our budget that could fund this definitively in this year, starting on October 1st, it may be appropriate to postpone my motion until we go through those other things, and actually make the cuts that would generate the necessary funding. Because this is later on in the list, that has a lot of other items in front of it, that, which if eliminated, would provide these funds. So I would withdraw my motion with consent of the second, but I definitely want to come back to it before we finish the list, and see if we've made available the funds that will accomplish what we want to.
I appreciate that.
So that's a withdrawal of your motion?
I do.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I would go along with that.
All right, thank you. The motion has been withdrawn. And Councilmember Wright, I believe you had your hand up with a question?
I was going to second Councilmember Nelson. I want to make sure that we not just, not only can we afford it this year, but that we can afford it moving forward. And given that we are sort of groping our way through a very dark tunnel right now, and we don't know exactly what funding will look like in fiscal year 2022, I think it's appropriate that we at least pause right now, and examine what we can possibly, revenue that we can possibly shift over, to fund this with the remaining items on the list, and then, if necessary, say we will fund it in October, but with the caveat that we can revisit if things are really, really tight.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Nelson?
And just for clarification, for the documents we're looking at, it would essentially be a modification of FIRE Option 2, which, as printed, says it begins January 1st, 2021. It would be that same option, but begin October 1st, 2021.
October, right. All right.
Actually, were you talking about beginning it then, or were you talking about, I guess that guy didn't then?
That was my intention, to begin it then. But of course, at this point, if we don't have the funds, we haven't cut other things to enable us to have the resources, then we're not gonna be able to begin it then.
I mean, if your, if your motion says that we're not gonna talk about it in October, but we're gonna begin it in October, I'd second that motion.
Well, I've withdrawn the motion, with the intention to bring it up before the list session is over with, tonight or some other day, within the next week or two.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for clarifying information and giving that to us.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Councilmember Wright, do you have something? Oh, okay, thank you.
The City Manager.
Thank you, Chief Ormsen. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. I was just curious if the $6 million deficit takes into account managed vacancy savings for quarter one?
I don't think we did include managed vacancy in the $6.5 million balancing. Did we?
No, we're just, we have a hiring freeze, but we don't know what that number would be right now.
So, I mean, is there really any, do we have any reason to expect that the hiring freeze is going to be lifted in the next two or three months?
No.
We don't think it will be?
That is correct.
So, in that case, shouldn't-
But I also need to, I just want to remind everybody, there is not a hiring freeze on public safety positions.
Sure. Okay. So absent public safety positions, shouldn't we then assume that the remainder of money that we had budgeted to fill vacant positions should now be made available?
But that's really only one-time money. So, because you would have those positions filled the next year.
Sure, but there are still some, there's still some items on this list that are one-time expenditures. And I don't see why we shouldn't factor that into the savings available to us.
I would also ask that you keep in mind that we typically use managed vacancy that falls to fund balance for pays you go capital in the next, in the next budget.
It's, yeah. I mean, it'd still be helpful to know what that figure is, I think.
For this current fiscal year to date? Is that what you're asking?
I'm curious to know, for quarter one, if we were to freeze hiring, again, not including public safety, how much we would save? Something that could be clarifying, as we try to sort through these expenses.
I'd have to work with human resources and figure out how many positions are vacant at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to pass that before we go to further.
Now, that, I know you mentioned on the city side, that it only, it doesn't include public safety. Obviously, we have no control over the school side, right? If they have managed vacancies, are there, is there a hiring freeze there, or is that just on the city side?
I would have to, I-
So that's not on that side, according to you?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And it would be general fund, don't it?
And the general fund is where we give about $100 million to schools, right? Of, I guess, about local 42 million, or whatever.
With debt service, I think it's in the $57 million range.
57 with debt service, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually on the page that we gave to you.
Right, correct.
Why don't we discuss schools now, since that's such a big number, and that could have a serious impact on what we're doing?
All right, thank you. Mr., are you looking for a number? Are we gonna go to schools right now for discussion?
Apparently, we're gonna go to schools, which is number 32 on the list in front of you.
May I actually suggest that we just pause for a moment, to like, let people stand up and move around? I, for one, could use a five-minute break. That's all right.
All right, that's fine. We can do that. I need water. And now we are discussing Lynchburg City Schools, and the budget line for that appropriation.
It is item number 32 on your list.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion on item number 32 with the schools?
All right. So the manager's proposal is, I'm gonna use round numbers, because I don't have it from me.
1.5, yes.
1.5 from the primary budget, and additional 700, once you revise it, for a total of 2.2.
Correct.
So the manager's proposed budget is a reduction of 2.2.
Yes.
And I'm inclined to support that, because I think we need to do it. And in looking at the way, in looking at the way the schools are functioning, I think, you know, they're doing, they're doing an excellent job getting the meals out, and attending to the students as best they can, despite all the challenges associated with it. However, schools, the schools themselves have been unoccupied. We're going, you know, you're not gonna have the heat load in all of them, there're gonna be tremendous utility costs, there are costs associated with this, that they're not gonna be, they're not going to be encumbered by the schools, I guess, is that the proper word? They're not gonna have those costs that they would normally have. They're gonna have some more. And I think, I think having that additional $700,000, I know it's a bit of a shot in the dark, but it's a good starting point.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I have a lot of questions and concerns about this proposal. So I'm curious to know, I know Dr. Edwards is here with us, if she'd be willing to share with us, you know, what the implications of a 2.2 million dollar reduction in her budget would mean for her and her team.
My glasses are fogging up, so I can't see.
Hello, thank you.
Thank you. So, let me take these off, too. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And yes, as you said, the buildings are unoccupied, for the most part. We do have four command centers open at our four large schools that are serving the kids and feeding families, as well as providing instructional materials via packets for students and families to continue. The other buildings are open. We are doing our maintenance and tech work in them. So all of our summer plans are going on right now, while the kids are not in the building, so that we don't waste that time. So there is work going on in the building. And while we may see savings in the utilities, because we're flushing less toilets, obviously, with the kids not there, we are also, similar to the city, experiencing some cuts. So one of the main cuts that you all had projected was a cut in sales tax. And part of what you're doing in balancing the budget is also balancing the sales tax part on the schools. But schools are also separately funded through sales tax and through lottery funds. As a matter of fact, that's over 30% of our revenue on the state side, and we're seeing diminished revenue on that end. So what we have tried to do was first, in pre-COVID, to come in at level funding. So before we even had the COVID, we came in at level funding, and we were able to, for the fourth year in a row, balance our budget, also do some great things for kids. We've been really tight with attrition, and resignation, and repurposing positions, to make it work, because we did not want to have to have the impact of the 2% increase that the state was proposing for year one and two to fall on the city side. Then we had COVID, and you all have already taken from the current budget, $1.5 million. So the savings that we may be experiencing right now due to school closures, $1.5 million has already come back to council, because that has been taken out of the current school year budget, while schools are closed right now. We don't know the status of schools, so while you're saying that we may have that savings in the future in FY21, we don't know if buildings will be open. We don't know if they are open, whether we'll be under a social distancing plan, where kids will be in school, but at different times, alternate schedules. There are a lot of things that are up for discussion, so I don't think that I can just make that call and say they're gonna be empty, therefore, we are not gonna need that funding in next year. Also, as we look at our revenue, we're looking at, potentially, if you look at the sales tax, and you look at the lottery, and I do not assume that all of that will be gone. But on the federal side, that's about $18 million for us, that we are hoping that that hit from sales tax and lottery going into next year, which I know you all are waiting until October, so are we, to see what those funds look like. That's a huge hit, that we are contemplating on our end, and have not had discussions with the city, as to how you may help us with that huge hit, if that happens. We're trying to mitigate that on our own, and plan for that by having some, we are having some hiring freezes. We do have some staff member, positions that we haven't refilled. We have repurposed some positions, and we just, even though you see the postings of the openings, so we keep track of what we need, everything is not being filled. So I don't want you to be misled and go on our website and say, there's a list of openings. Schools are just going crazy. We are not going crazy. So we do have a hiring freeze. But we are very concerned about losing 2.2 million in next year's budget, because we are still under the obligation to provide continuity of learning, and not even so much as understanding what the future will hold, but looking forward to, what kinds of things are we gonna do differently in terms of instruction, and providing for the needs of kids? And the wild card for us all, as kids are out of school, kids are home, we don't know what condition our students are gonna come back in. So we want to make sure that we're prepared, not just with the academics, but also social, emotional, and services, just as you talked about, some of the things that our fire department may be experiencing. Our families may also be experiencing that as well. So that 2.2 million dollar cut for us would be critical. It would require that we would start to lay off essential staff, if that's where we are. We do not want to go there. We don't want our talented workforce to go to other school divisions. We want to keep the talented folks that we do have. But that is where that type of cut will put us.
So, sorry, I'm not, thank you. So, do schools make up around, what, a fifth of our budget, or give or take, the general operating? Say, 42 million or so out of 200 million? So about a fifth?
About.
And yet, this proposal suggests that they should bear 2.2 million out of 6 million? So they should bear a third of the burden?
No, they're bearing 700,000, not the 6.5 million.
I thought you were also suggesting removing 1.5 million from next year's as well.
That was in my original proposal.
Right. Well, I wasn't necessarily enthralled to that either. So the total amount, then, for fiscal year '21 is 2.2 million. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, it seems, I am highly uncomfortable with this, if it means laying off essential staff, which is, Dr. Edwards, you're telling us, that's what this would mean?
Yeah. So when we experience the 1.5 million dollar cut that we did from the state, so, again, our revenue sources are from you and the state. So any cuts that we're experiencing are coming on both ends, makes it very difficult to plan for education. But the original 1.5 million dollars that we experienced in fiscal year '21 next year, what we did was all of the things that we had planned for in the flat-funded budget, where we were asking for 42 million. So all of those things that we had retooled and repurposed, and planned for, including things like the support for students through the mental health, the non-Medicaid special pieces, any kind of professional development that we had for staff, we had some learning in there in terms- We had some learning in there in terms of reimbursement for coursework, which is something that we haven't had. We were trying to make ourselves a very marketable place where people say, this is why I want to work at Lynchburg City Schools, as well as provide extra slots at the Gov. Center for students, increase the field trips and things like that. All of that, when we got the first cut from the state, which was one point five million, all of that was taken out of the budget. So none of that was in the current budget. So we went back, we rebalanced our budget with the one point five million dollar cut from the state, and we got it back to balance and we were, we were happy with that. Then we experienced the one point five million dollar cut in the current year. So we recognized that one of the things that we, I proposed to our board is, I don't know what the future holds, but I need to be planning for it. So is it possible that we could have a salary reserve? We are paying our nutrition workers and actually, we're not sure if they're going to be able to break even. And if they don't, we're still going to pay them because they're valuable. We're going to pay our transportation people to continue the feeding program through the summer, which is different than what we've done in previous summers. But I want to make sure that we had money to pay them. And again, trying to develop a budget within my means, within the schools. So tighten up now, save money now, don't spend money now, possibly have a salary reserve. If I need to dip into something to help fund things through the summer and into the beginning of the school year, we could once again do that without being a burden on the city. So the one point five million dollar cut in the existing year obviously reduces some of that in the planning and, and we worked through that. But any available fund balance that we might have, we're hoping that that may help us if there are additional gaps and cuts. We're also going to get stimulus money similar to the city, but it's nowhere near the third of our budget that sales tax and lottery makes up. So we're looking at possibly three million dollars, of which twenty-two percent of that, so I don't want anybody to get excited. You get three million dollars, twenty-two percent of that looks like it's going to non-public schools. So it looks like we're getting it, but it's going to non-public schools. The other thing, even with the stimulus and-
I'm sorry to interrupt, could you say that again?
The stimulus money. When we get our money through title funding, non-public schools, we assume the funds for them, but we have to distribute it to them. So every dime that's associated with Lynchburg City Schools does not go to Lynchburg City Schools. Some of that funding goes to non, to public, private schools and non-public schools. But we are their fiscal agent. So, and I know that lots of people like to look at numbers and say, look what you got. And then we try to explain what it looks like. So we're waiting for the actual guidance on that in terms of what the actual dollars are. But again, talking to local school divisions around us, everybody is bracing for, hold on to that, that funding because we don't know the impact of sales tax.
So do you have a sense of both real dollar loss and then projected loss of like what the net is for the schools? Given, you know, a loss in state revenue from sales and lottery taxes, potential loss from the city side, and then potential relief dollars coming from federal and state authorities? So what's the, what's the net there?
I wish I did have the net because we keep guessing that what's the percentage for sales tax? And, and I will say, some people were starting with, well, let's go with ten percent. And, and that might not be a big, a big hurt. So about one point eight million dollars, which is where we would maybe break even with stimulus funds. But I've heard upwards to twenty-five percent and some people are projecting fifty percent. So it's hard to plan the sales tax impact on the federal side. It's even harder to plan the sales tax impact on the federal and the city side when we absorb part of what the city also faces. So, so it's very difficult. So right now, we're trying to have a flat, a very flat budget with minimal staff increases that we have. And when I say staff increases, I'm talking first grade teachers, if I need an additional first grade teacher. We put all that stuff on hold right now until we get to the numbers with our kids.
So, I'm sorry, I just have a couple more clarifying questions and then I'll, I'll definitely get over the floor. I know I've been taking up a lot of time. So, one, has your board had a chance to confer and discuss this?
Not to the degree that we found out about the seven hun, the additional seven hundred thousand. Our board meeting, we moved to Thursday because we knew that council would be discussing this. And quite frankly, we wanted to be here because when you discussed the one point five million, I think we were gone at that point and we had not had a conversation with you. So when I did find out last Tuesday that there was an additional seven hundred thousand that was being proposed, I did ask my board and, and my CFO to come to the meeting so we could at least be part of the table and part of the discussion. So we've had some offline conversations, but our board meeting is Thursday. The other thing that I'd just like to bring to everybody's attention, because I'm trying to be as transparent as I possibly can be, is yes, did our state revenue increase? So it looks like it's going to increase by two-point-five million dollars. And again, two-point-five million dollars sounds like, wow, that's a lot of money. Well, before we get excited, one point eight million of that is going to health and VRS. So we're taking that right off the table. The VRS contribution went up and we have some health insurance things that we have to, we got gaps and holes that we have to fill, that, that resulted from last year. We had a great year the year before and you guys have experienced this too. You have a great year, so you try to mitigate the budget a little bit. And that's how we got through our own salary guides without asking for increases. But last year was, or this current year was not as great as the previous year. So that's our first and foremost that we want to, to fill up. And that leaves about, what, six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars of that increase? And that's projected sales tax increase. So when we got our revenue from the state, one of the things that's the same pre-COVID, post-COVID or in COVID is the sales tax. So what they projected at six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars before COVID hit as the increase in sales tax, they have not changed that. And we think that that's unrealistic now to think that we're going to get those funds. So I haven't even accounted for those funds. So the increase that we're going to see on the state side, pretty much I'm looking at, that's a break even. The piece that you don't know is the one point five million dollar match. So for us to take two-point-five million, we have to match it with one point five million, which again, we went back to our existing budget without the, the cuts from the city side to say, okay, we may be able to manage that one point five as long as we receive flat funding from the city.
So you would still be required, you know, if you accept the two-point-whatever mil, or the one point eight million dollars off the top that you said is going to, to VRS and I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Health. Health insurance.
So you would, you have to match that anyway?
Yes.
And you, that is built into your level funding request? Okay, so I, I'll just say here, thank you, Dr. Edwards. I'll just say that I got a number of calls from school board members saying we haven't really had a chance to really digest this and have a conversation as a team. And these are obviously the folks that city council has tasked as being sort of thoughtful stewards of the city schools in, in concert with Dr. Edwards. And so I think it would probably be imprudent, I would offer this to council, I think it'd be imprudent for council to act on this today, to, to vote on their budget request today, given that they haven't had a chance to sort of take into account and do the, the kind of thoughtful review and planning that we would anticipate that a public body would do in the event of a seven hundred thousand dollar cut to their budget. So I would recommend that we hold on, on voting on this until they have had a chance to meet on Thursday and, and make a, make a form, if they choose, make a formal recommendation back to council.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Hagelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Edwards. I appreciate you being here. I guess I do have to say one thing since we're talking about schools. And my wife is a principal in one of the elementary schools in the city, that I've been advised by the city attorney and the Commonwealth attorney, I do not have a conflict of interest because of the level at which my wife serves. But in addition to that, my wife is going to be retired by the time this budget is in effect. So it would not affect her, me or anybody any more than anybody in the city. So, and I can, and I do think and affirm that I can be objective and unbiased on this. No doubt, when you brought your budget, presented your budget originally and the city manager responded to it, at that point, it was assumed that we were pre-COVID nineteen and that budget would fund the schools for a traditional calendar year, beginning somewhere in August and going till the end of May, early June, with all of the programs and activities associated with a normal school year. And then COVID nineteen pandemic hit and you all closed down in the middle of March. And at that time, you were still presenting the calendar, the, excuse me, the budget that we are looking at. And then we're advised the city manager had some cuts to that and now has another seven hundred thousand dollar cut. In March, you had a school board meeting and at that meeting, you was very astutely, I recall, by watching it on the school division website, pointed out that there would be some substantial savings from the current budget year as a result of the schools closing down. And no doubt, the forces and factors that resulted in whatever savings you had are the same forces and factors that are causing the city to lose drastic amounts of revenue. So what is benefiting, you know, I put benefit in quote, what is benefiting your bottom line this spring was hurting everybody else and their bottom line in the future. So the same, same forces are having directly opposite effects. And I think that's a fair statement. Would you agree that's a fair statement?
Not exactly, and here's why. So the savings that we are experiencing, so let's take fuel for transportation because we don't have as many buses running as many routes back and forth. So assuming that my revenue to continue to pay my staff to do the work that they're doing, because teachers are still working, is the same, I would agree with you. But if I'm experiencing or I'm anticipating that in July, in June and July, that the same thing that's going to happen to the city when you look at sales tax, you're anticipating a decrease in revenue from sales tax, so am I. That doesn't have anything to do with the city and has everything to do with the state side. So where am I going to plug that hole for the decrease that I'm going to experience on the state, on the state side? I'm going to plug it with the savings I may, I have from fuel and the savings that I have from not having kids in the building, even though there's still work going on in the building. So as I was looking at my savings, I was being very thoughtful that, yes, this looks like it's going to be savings. However, still not knowing what's going to happen with sales tax and lottery in the current year, savings isn't saving. Savings is going to have to plug the hole where that revenue gap will be. Otherwise, we'd again be coming back to city councils with the same kind of concerns that you all have. So what, the things that you all are experiencing as you're, I think it's six billion dollars or six million dol, six million, sorry. Six million dollars that you're projecting, six-point-five that you're projecting as a, a revenue gap. On the school side, I also have to project a revenue gap from both the city, as the city manager proposes the cuts in us, but also from the state. So the, the short answer to your question is no. I, I would not absolutely agree with you because we were anticipating that any savings that we did have would, would cover our revenue gap.
Okay, at that time, you said that you requested authority from the school board and the school board give you, did give you authority to create what you called a salary reserve fund.
Correct.
I understand that you have not funded that reserve fund for strategic reasons because other people's eyes may be looking at what's in there and gauge your needs, even though you may have that fund sitting over on the side. So, and at least that was the explanation I heard from the school division with regard to not funding it at that time. But at this point, can you estimate what your end-of-year fund balance would be?
Not yet.
Why not?
Because I'm still trying to figure out what the impact for sales tax and lottery-
You can't even estimate?
Might be, what our end-of-year fund balance will be. I mean, it's not going to be anywhere five million dollars of what we had in the one point five that you took out. So, and I don't want to give you a number and then have you hold me to it and then sales tax and, and is up or down and that kind of stuff. I can tell you the revenues that I am anticipating. So I do know that I'm anticipating getting about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for Medicaid, which is going to come at the end of June and it may be in the current year, but it may roll over to fund balance. So I am looking at that. But the way that you all are struggling with sales tax and lottery tax, we, or lottery revenue, I should say, we're struggling with that too. And we're continuing to pay our essential staff, even though we do have some staff that haven't been paid and some hourly workers who aren't providing services, the same as the city, that aren't getting paid. But our teachers are still working, our administrators are still manning the buildings, they're still coming in, they're still, we're still having IEP meetings. We're still placing kids in out-of-district placements. So they're still going on. So the largest part of my budget is the people part. And I think you, we've talked about that several times. So that being the largest part of my budget, it is very difficult to predict if I don't know where the sales tax is going to-
Okay, it sounds like you're suggesting that the, all of the sa, the amount of the savings that you may have are totally set off by the revenues, the sales tax and the lottery and so forth?
Well, what I'm suggesting-
I wasn't aware that those resources made up that percentage of your budget.
What, what I am suggesting and what I'm asking of council is what you all are absolutely doing right now, is being cautious and being thoughtful and mindful about what's to come. So not knowing what's to come. And again, I can't stress enough that a third of our federal budget is sales tax and lottery. It's big for me.
Federal budget?
Yes, it's huge, the, the state, I'm sorry, for the state. That's huge. And I would love to say that that's not going to take a big hit, but I don't know. I really don't know. And I don't want to be that type of leader who doesn't plan for that. So yes, if it, if it's, if we're holding on to savings, which is a thing to do for us right now until we can shore up our, our budget, I think it's the prudent thing to do right now. And not have, I don't want to have any excess spending or excess hiring or any of that.
I appreciate that. Now, let me move on because I'm sure others have other questions and I have a few more. I, over the weekend, I went to the city school division website to look at how many positions needed to be filled. And I saw that there were ninety-nine open positions on the website. Five of those were administrators, forty-five of them were certified, certainly those have various qualifications. Forty-seven were classified, minimum wage hourly, there's not a whole lot of savings there, of course, and seven substitutes. And that doesn't generate a whole lot of savings if you don't fill those. But on May first, these jobs were still posted as open. And does that mean that you are soliciting those positions to be filled?
So I think I started by saying that, if, if I, I don't want to repeat myself, but I will say that you will see all of our open positions on our website. What you won't see is us interviewing for all of our open positions. And similar to what's going on with the fire department, and I totally support them one hundred percent, they have open positions, the police department has had open positions, we've had open transportation positions that are there. But we recognize that we may be in a time where we might not be able to fill them. So we did put a freeze on our classified positions. There are certain essential positions that we do need to fill and we have filled some of those positions.
And that makes sense, that's very prudent. So would it be reasonable to conclude that the budget that was submitted last winter to the city before COVID nineteen hit anticipated all of these positions being filled? Whether you did it in fact or not, the budget was based on filling all of these?
I think the budget that I presented in the pre-COVID budget-
Right.
Has some additions in them as well, which I've shared with council, some additional positions. So I don't want to mislead folks and think that it's just those open positions where, which are people who are here right now. Those aren't new positions. But we did have a very nice pre-COVID budget that had things in it that our community has been asking for, that our, our staff has been asking for and our families. But that was pre-COVID, all of that is out of the budget.
So it's now reasonable to conclude, given we're in COVID, that the ninety-nine positions are not going to be filled, even though the budget that was submitted presumed they would be?
I would say it's probably not prudent to say the ninety-nine positions. That would be the same as saying if the chief of police left, we're not going to fill his position. That's an essential position out of those ninety-nine positions. But again, not to repeat myself, the, there are classified positions that are listed on there. There are substitute positions that are listed on it that we haven't refilled. And what I haven't even shared with you is some of the positions where people have retired and resigned and we're not refilling those and they're not even being posted. So you don't even see every open position if I were to refill everybody who left those positions because I do have a couple right now that aren't even up there.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Is it reasonable to infer that if an inexperienced employee were to reach their point of retirement, that their replacement is going to be paid at a lower level than that experienced retiree?
Absolutely. If you look at our pay schedules and try to figure out how we were funding a pay increase without increasing, because we don't generate any revenue, we strategically look at that. We try- We try to count for, okay, if we do have a certain percentage of our, our veteran staff who retire at this salary and we hire, not that we're trying to hire everybody at a lower salary, but it does happen if that money can be used to fund our own internal salary increases, which is how, one of the ways that we were trying to do our initial budget without putting that local match back on the locality on the city to say, you know, every time the, the governor wants a local match, we have to come to you all. We're trying ways within ourselves to fund ourselves as best as possible.
So at this point, I understand that you're not going to fill some of those retirees, but you will fill others. But it's reasonable to conclude from the fact that all of these positions are not going to be filled, even though the budget was built on the assumption they would be filled and some of the retirees are going to be replaced by persons with, at a lower pay range, pay level, that there's a lot of savings that come, can come simply from staff going into next year.
Sure. If you just are only looking at the expenditure side. But if you make that statement and say this budget was built on, this budget was also built on the sales tax, the full funding of the revenue was also built on a request for level funding from the city and we're, we're not there either. So-
I agree. You, you don't have control over revenues to any, but you have a lot of control over expenditures.
I do.
And that is, that is what I'm speaking of. At this point, you presented the city with a budget that anticipated a full, normal, traditional calendar year. We're looking at strategies to reopen the economy. And if I listen to Governor Cuomo or all of those persons who are on top of this, Governor Northam, there are priorities as to how we move through the phases of recovery. The first being those where there's the ability to maintain distance, social distancing, and lack of large numbers congregating. And those sort of industries and businesses have been identified. The ones that I understand will be reopened last are those where large numbers of persons congregate together, which are theaters, concerts, and schools. So the Lynchburg City Schools, as with any school, is going to be the very last operation that will be given the permission to resume normal functioning. And we don't know when that is going to be. But based on how things are going, I think it's not unreasonable to think, to think that that's going to be after August and maybe even after September. And if that's the case, although I know you will continue distant learning and try to provide services, that sort of budget is a totally different budget from the traditional budget that we're looking at now. Is that fair to say?
I would say parts of that is fair to say, Councilmember Nelson. And I would invite you to go into the homes of some of these teachers and some of these instructional assistants. And you will see that while normal school, brick and mortar school from eight to three may not be occurring and we're not packing the children in rows and columns in a school building, that absolutely essential learning is still going on. And again-
I'm not disputing that. I am not disputing that. And that is not my point.
Well, that, but, but let me be clear about my budget, because I keep saying, we are a people industry. The biggest part of our budget is serving kids and that is the people serving kids. And right now, as we speak, even with the sales tax and everything that's up in the air, I have people who are right now probably on the phone, talking to families and checking in on our students, who are working well beyond what they probably would have done with the budget, should it had, the, the original budget with the eight to three school day that we had. So we still have, even though geography is stopping us from being in our buildings, and yes, there is the savings for the electricity, the water, the, the utilities, that's not the biggest part of my budget. The biggest part of my budget are the people who are working with our staff, students and families. And I will tell you that we have instructional assistants right now who are calling families and it should be a 10-minute call to find out whether or not they have internet access. Do they have high speed? Can they watch videos? And some of these calls are taking upwards to forty minutes to an hour, just because our staff care that much to listen to our families, to talk to our residents. I don't know that I can put a price on that and say that that's equivalent to the savings that I may have from flushing less toilets or having less electricity. I do know that I want those people to continue their work. And I do know that the challenge in front of schools is going to be great in terms of how we reinvent ourselves and how we rethink education in the fall. I don't think we're going to be off the hook to, to do distance learning as people may think it is. So we have our work cut out for us. We have to train our staff. There's some stuff that has to be done. So while the budget that I presented to you has a brick and mortar feel to it, there are things that are in, that aren't in there, that are the unknowns that I still have to work out and we have to be ready for, because our kids aren't going anywhere. They're still going to need us.
And Dr. Edwards, that is not the issue. Who needs what? The, the students need the school division far more than the school division can deliver at this time and under these circumstances. No question about that. And the, the burden of recovery for some students who are not taking advantage of what the school teachers are doing for them is going to be drastic. My question is, how much will be the year-end savings as a result of three and a half months of shutdown? And whether there will be savings in August and September, maybe in October, if things don't ramp up again? And all of the extracurricular and the coaches and the programs and the bands and the buses, three routes through every neighborhood every morning and three routes through every neighborhood every afternoon and, and the fuel that's associated with that? That's, that's a, not an insignificant figure, but those are hard facts that would be good to know. And, well, let me ask you this. I suspect you'll have a substantial fund balance at the end of the year, at this year. And you know, and we all know, the policies of the city with regard to what fund balances can be used for. One-time items, usually capital, but we've used it for other things such as medical insurance and so forth. If there is a seven hundred, at least a seven hundred thousand dollar fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, and the city were to agree that the first seven hundred thousand dollar of that fund balance would be held in an escrow account and given back to the school division at a decision made in October, depending on whether you open on time and don't open on time, would that be, and council will agree to that, would that be something that would sufficiently fill this seven hundred thousand dollar gap?
The seven hundred thousand gap that the city manager is proposing or-
Yes.
I don't know that that would be sufficient, but I also don't want to make that decision without having had the full discussion with my board.
Well, that's why I say it now. And I like Councilmember Wright's proposal and I would support it so that the school board can consider those things. But I think-
And, and Councilmember Nelson, I don't want people who are listening to think that it is possible for a school to have zero fund balance. As much as I try, and I've done a pretty decent job of really digging deep and retooling and rebudgeting and seeing, and doing things from a zero-based budget, things occur during a school year that just happened that we're going to have a fund balance. The city has a fund balance. You have a 10% fund balance. You have a fund balance, you have an emergency fund. We as schools are not permitted to do that. And we're not suggesting that we want to have large fund balances. But in this current situation, and I understand where you're going with, is it reasonable? Is it reasonable? It is reasonable if you are guaranteeing my revenue on the other side. But if you were to say to me, is it reasonable that we can take seven hundred thousand, 2.2 million, pull it aside and you'd still be okay to pay the teachers? Because you just said that we understand that the teachers are providing the services to the kids, the staff are providing the services to the kids. It becomes unreasonable if on the state side, the revenue decreases. So it's hard, and I don't want to be disrespectful. It's hard for me to say what is reasonable when I have revenue on both sides and this revenue is being cut and this revenue is being cut and the sales tax revenue that you all are experiencing, that, that you want to, you know, help us, want us to help out, we're also experience, experiencing that. So it's more difficult to plan when you have two sets of revenue and you don't know which way either one are, are going, with the expectation that, yes, we are going to continue schools. We are absolutely going to continue educating our kids and supporting our families.
So I'll come back to my question. If city council, a majority of city council was willing to authorize a portion of your fund balance to be set aside until October to look at whether you start on time, which would mean your budget's going to be needed completely? Or if you delay in opening, which would mean you, you're not going to need such a substantial budget because there's some expenses that will not be there? Is that something that would be entertained by you as a, as an option so as to give the city some flexibility in this very unique environment that we face in a world pandemic?
I love that word, flexibility. So, so yes, here's, here's a collaborative flexibility because we are stewards in the city. And we as the school system are by no means trying to bankrupt the city or do anything to harm the city. We want to also help the city. We want to help our residents. What I would ask for from my council and what I'm sure my board would also want is not hard, fast decisions, but this thing is evolving as we go along.
Absolutely.
And because it's evolving as we go along, we need flexibility. We need to be able to say, we don't know in two, I don't know what June 15th is going to look like. And that's a month away. But what I do know is that if all of us are good stewards of, of the funds that we do have available and if we're working together to say, you know what, this is what the city needs, this is what the schools need, I think we would be in better shape. So I'm asking council to, for the same sort of flexibility. I'm not trying to spend a whole bunch of dollars, but I, I can't predict the future and tell you specifically, yes, if you did this, I will be fine in July, I will be able to make payroll, I will be able to do that. I would say, let's ask the city manager if she could do the same. We are in the same boat here in trying to predict the status of where we're going in the future. The best we can do as a community is work together. And yes, we understand that, hey, if there's some extra here, we've done that before with the city where, when we had the bridge, the dam, the lake, where the city was in need of some extra funds. And the schools, we took money out of our health insurance reserve and gave five hundred thousand dollars to a capital improvement plan to free up money. We work together as a community. We are one community. So that is what I'm asking for. And yes, I would love to be able to give you solid numbers because as a former math supervisor, it is driving me nuts that I cannot predict the changes on both sides of this revenue and what that's going to look like. But I can tell you, we're going to be thoughtful and mindful. We work with our board. We're working with you all to, to make the best of this situation.
All right. Thank you for that. I have one last question. In view of how, how tight things are, what is moving the decision to have summer food deliveries? Summer, the summer food deliveries, which you alluded to a minute ago, I don't think that's ever been done. It's not done over the Christmas vacation or holiday vacations. What, what is the justification for that?
For doing that? Well, normally in the summer, we tell our residents, come on out, come to the pool, we'll feed you wherever you gather en masse. Right now, our residents aren't gathering and massing. So since they're not gathering and massing, and I don't think anyone in this town wants us to say we're not going to try our best to feed our families. So that is what's driving the summer food program. The fact that I won't have families all at the pool, I won't have them at the library, they won't be crowded in buildings somewhere where we could just say, here is the food. So we still need to provide some access to food for folks who can't get to food and can't get out to get it.
Is the practice of distributing food to the residents during the summer, is that, was that adopted because it's reimbursed or compensated by some federal program?
No. But if you're on our superintendent calls, you would understand that that direction to continue to feed the families to meet their number one basic need is really coming. That direction is supported by our state as well as our state superintendent to continue to feed our families. And we understand we're being reimbursed for parts of the meals in terms of the, the summer meal program, but it may not cover itself.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. And I want to make everyone aware of time, six ten. Yeah, uh huh. Hold one moment. Councilmember Wright?
Now, I just want to add some, some, some clarifying, just clarifying question on Councilmember Nelson's point. For next week, given that your board will be meeting, would it be possible to at least try to, understanding this is really hard and you all don't know, but just run some like worst-case scenarios or best-case scenarios of what it would look like for your end-of-year fund balance? And then any vacancy savings that you expect, just like I asked from, from the city manager for the remainder of the year, obviously taking into account the one and a half million that was pulled back? And then for the quarter, Q1 of 2021? Would that be possible?
Yeah, we can work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Perro?
Actually, he's next.
Councilmember Havelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the, the questions. I guess what, the one thing that you said at the end is probably where I'll begin, is you said that we're kind of in this together. You mentioned the city's needs and the schools' needs and, and we've got to balance it with the third need, the biggest need, and that's our taxpayers. And, and so balancing that on our boss, the taxpayers and the citizens of Lynchburg, how we fund this is now critical. And it's not, you know, we're asking lots of questions, not just because it's fun or whatever, but because of the fact that fifteen thousand of our citizens lost their job in Lynchburg that we reported on just last week. I mean, these are the very people that are paying the bills.
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I make a clarification of that number?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm still in the middle of my conversation.
Fifteen thousand people in Lynchburg lost their jobs? I believe it was five thousand within the city of Lynchburg?
I think there was fifteen thousand that were the numbers that were around there.
It's on the scale of five thousand versus fifteen, which is potentially a regional number.
There were fifteen thousand that were working in the whole area, of which then there was another number that was specifically citizens of Lynchburg that are actually working in Lynchburg. I think you had that broken down.
Which was almost five thousand. Thank you. Yes.
So when we're looking at these large numbers, and, and last week, we're up to now thirty million across the country, and it's going to grow again this Thursday when the new jobs report comes. And granted, just to be open, these thirty million people don't all live in Lynchburg too, by the way.
Let's clarify that.
Just, I just, just got to clarify that before I get-
Corrected.
Corrected by. So realizing so many people that have lost their positions, that's why we're asking lots of these questions. And it's not just council asking it. There's lots of teachers that are also taxpayers. What I talked about a lot with regarding, want to make sure that our city budget has everything as sleek and as smooth as possible for boots on the ground, whether it be the fire department, whether it be the trash collectors, whether it also be the teachers. And so I, I've spoken with teachers that say, what about this empowerment academy? And I appreciate you giving me those numbers, about another half million dollars that may be a way that we can kind of figure out a way to kind of consolidate. This money that has been set aside, that is now not set aside because there's been a task force that has met for the last year talking about school consolidation. We have schools that have elementary schools, I think is where the focus is, and I hope the school board really does this in this budget. We have schools that have five hundred and, as, as much as five hundred and twenty-four kids, all the way down to a hundred and sixty-nine kids. So with that being the case, school consolidation, so we can actually pay our teachers or we can actually keep the service. It's not all the extra levels of bureaucracy and administration. You gave me the number last, a few weeks ago, about one and a half million with regarding assistant principals that aren't funded by the state. You talked about the matches. These are all 100% local taxpayers. I'm sure there's lots of them that are needed, especially in the big schools. But if there's a way that we can consolidate, so if these school board members that are here can say, hey, just because we're not in the midst of having this committee meeting anymore because they said we're not meeting because of COVID and it's hard to meet, the, some money that was kind of set aside for maybe planning is no longer there. I do hope the school board really says, my goodness. I mean, we've lost lots of kids. I mean, I looked at these numbers just in the budget, page 275 of our budget, and I realize numbers may be wrong, but it showed- And I realize numbers may be wrong, but it showed 2, 7,981 kids in, in 2019. This new budget says there's 7,710. So in a matter of just a couple of years, we're looking at hundreds of less children. And I recognize they have needs. And I recognize these kids are there. But we have really, in a time of now that we've never seen, it needs to be the three of us working together, the city, the schools, for our taxpayers. We can't just say, hey, we need more money, you need more money. We, we really have got to look out for them. The empowerment academy, if there's administration in that budget. I mean, there's, I think there's lots of folks in there that, again, I realize you didn't hire them. They've been there. If there's a way now to, you know, to have these unfilled vacancies that are never filled, I think that would be preferential. Looking at the fact that how we've consol, our average schools now, our elementary schools, are about 360 some kids in there. You know, I think some averages are much larger numbers than that. So when I look at the 11 schools and I look at the 2019 to 20 numbers, I'm looking at 362 kids on average. Some of them are really small. Some of them are good sized and big. Let's figure out a way that we can consolidate without having this, to save that administration. So you're able to not have that building. You're not able to have another principal and assistant principal and all the extra folks that are there. And I see this declining in enrollment. And I looked at the entitlement sheets. I know the budget had said somewhere the state was about 57 million. I saw a late entitlement sheet that was somewhere around 59 million from the state after the governor's budget. And I realize those numbers may be different. But it's actually was 2 million more than even in this budget. So the, the state money originally in the budget was presenting a little bit more. Our city taxpayers have been burdened for a long time. That's why we have the fiscal stress that we have, where we're the sixth, the eighth, highest in the whole state, because we fund our school system very well. And if we're funding it very well, we'd like it to actually go to the boots on the ground. We'd like it to go to the teachers in the classroom, making sure that they're educating the kids. And so when I look at these different programs and these different numbers, the one and a half million of the extra assistant principals, the extra half million dollars in the empowerment academy, if there's an ability to consolidate, I think we can do more than what we have here. You know, and I realize you don't want to, you know? But, you know, I think it's needed because before you got here, these budget numbers, the local taxpayer was contributing about 30, 29, 30 million. It's gone through the roof. We got a, we got a ballgame going, hey, they're, they're still playing. Those numbers went up, local taxpayers as high as they've been. And so I realize it's difficult now and it sounds bad to, to bring back. But as Councilmember Nelson said, we've had some pretty good years of pretty good reserves and pretty good fund balance at the end of the year, which I'm delighted for. I'm just hopeful that we can really figure out a way that we can trim that administration. We can really just go forward and say, hey, this is a good opportunity. We've got lots of schools. We've got a couple of schools that are 200 something, got a school 170. Maybe it's time to really consolidate and figure out how we can do that. So that's what I'd really like to see us do, so we can actually keep the teachers. And, and actually, some of these teachers have recognized that their pay raise went to another administrator. And, and getting a little tired of that, you know? So the city manager mentioned the 57 million with the operating and debt service. Part of that was, again, before you came here with some of the debt service for some of those other school buildings. So I, I really, we need to really trim. And, and I think there's lots of trim, trimming that can be done here because we have the standards of quality. I think it's somewhere around, we're supposed to contribute about 20 million. We're about double. We don't know where all that money goes. You know, granted, you do and you see it, but it's a lot of extra money. When we're looking at 20 million bucks extra, and I realize there's lots of things that are, need to be done. So I, I really do hope that you'll, your board will go back and really say, hey, here's something we really need to do because we are three of us. It's not just the city and the schools, but it's all those folks that have lost their positions, lost their savings, that are really having it difficult now. So, thank you.
Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's a noble idea to, to feed children during the summer, but that sounds to me like it's a new program in a budget, in a budget time. You said that we weren't doing this before. You said that maybe you went to the pools, maybe you went to the libraries.
No, we had, we had feeding centers. The piece we didn't have was the transportation.
Local dollars should not be used for that. If the state's paying you to feed everybody in the city of Lynchburg, then, then go for it. But that is outside the direct mission of the schools. The school's mission is to educate the children. I buy the fact that you can't teach a hungry child. So yes, you have to feed them when they're in schools. But the people have managed over the holidays and over, over the summers with helps of churches. Other, my church packs lunch bag, backpacks for lunch every, for, for schools. We don't have to pick that up. I'm absolutely, I, we are in a time of austerity and we need to, we need to act like it. We can't print money unlike, unlike the feds. So we've got to make cuts. And that's going to affect your revenue and it's going to affect, affects the city's revenue. And we've got to make some hard decisions. And I'm, I, I get the story. I get the woe is me and the poor children are going to suffer. I understand. But the school's budget has increased more over the past 10 years than any of our other department budgets. It's gone up and up and up and up. There's no end to it. So what I need from you, please, and this is consistent with everybody else, but the numbers that you've given out, which have been fine, but I can't track them because they're not in this budget. What I need is on page 267, I need a restatement of the state revenue, the federal revenue, the other revenue. And we know what our local revenue is. Those are the numbers, that's the number, that being consistent. I want to see what your best estimate for the revenue is in those numbers so I can compare apples to apples. I don't care about state lottery funds. I don't care about state tax revenues. What is the state revenue coming in? What is the federal revenue? How's it going to change? What's your best guess for it? How's that affect your budget? So that's the information that I think we need in order to make, to make real decisions here. But, you know, we have no, because people aren't buying lottery tickets. I can't control that. What am I going to ask somebody to do to pay more taxes?
If I, if I could, so.
I, I don't have any more questions. Thank you. I appreciate what you've done. I think we're trying to wrap up now for the day. Obviously, we're not making decisions on this now because we've asked for it to go back. But we all know what's going to happen when it comes back. They're going to say, oh, we need all the money we asked for. You know, we need to make some decisions. These are tough decisions. These are tough times. And I'm sorry about it, but we've got to do the hard work and everybody's suffering. We're not, we're not having any fun up here. So that's it, Madam Mayor.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilder. And followed by, I will give you an opportunity to answer those. I heard two questions in there, but go ahead. I wasn't clarifying with what you just said. I heard a question in Councilmember Hegelson's conversation. Councilmember Wilder?
Okay, again, thank you for your support about children. I understand with the situation with, with this COVID-19 and the person that want to leave their homes and the school system has done a wonderful job in going around our community to feed our children. So we really appreciate them for taking care of our children. They're not just the school, they're all of our children. So we're thankful for that. I understand the school system budget has increased over the years and the population has gone down. We've gone over that several times. So we understand that. I guess because I'm in the school so much, I'm a former school board member. Half my sisters are teachers. So some of them are special ed teachers as well, who just, one who just passed. So I, I'm in the school system a lot. I've seen the challenges that teachers and janitors and everyone face. So I appreciate the work of our school system. I appreciate your work. I understand these are challenging times, but the challenge is we don't, there's so much unknown here. And we do empower our, sometimes we can kind of micromanage a lot. We do have to give some credit to our school board members for working with you and kind of come find out some solutions. So again, all of us together, we need to find some solutions. I, I was, wasn't comfortable with the original cuts. I definitely not comfortable with the extra $700,000. I'd like to see, work to see how we can kind of fine tune that. If we can maybe help from half of that or something. So I want to see at some point, looking through these, at some point, we can bring back some additional information and we can work with this staff if we can find some way to not have such a deep cut to our school system. Again, we don't know the other challenges. We don't know what's going to happen in the fall. You know, what's it going to look like, what education is going to look like? Whether they say you can't have these many kids in the classroom or what it's going to be. It's just going to be some challenging time. So we've got to really put our heads together as a city and see if we can fund our children. And also when it comes down to economic development and bringing businesses in, they want to make sure they can come to a, a city with a, with a, with a, with a well prosperous school system where it's not suffering that challenging. And, and reason why it's increased so much because we have so many challenging kids with, with poverty brings a lot of challenges, various other things. So the kids have a lot of needs from social needs and what's going to happen to kids who've been home all this time period? You know, I was watching a mini show this morning and the teacher was saying the biggest thing he misses is his kids. You know, he's doing the teaching at the home and teaching on TV and stuff. And the biggest challenge he has is not seeing his kids, not asking him, how was their day? How was the family life? How's things going? And so many kids, I mean, being a therapist and dealing with so many kids, you would not believe how many kids are being sexually abused by a family member. And we did a day treatment program and just to see 90% of those kids were being sexually abused. And now they're in the homes continuously. So you have teachers who are worrying about what's happening to them. This kid of mine who's in his home who might be abusive. You know, so what's going to happen to come back in the fall? There's so many unknowns that we don't know. But we, we have to educate our children. And we, we not have an opportunity to say, oh, we're not going to educate you because you have too many issues. So we're going to put you away. So we, we are obligated to educate our children. As a child of God, we are obligated to help those who are less fortunate than ourselves. So I commend you for the work you're doing for our children. I commend you for the character to say, you want to feed the kids during the summertime when there's nobody else who want to come out the house. We have bus drivers that are going through, taking a chance. I've seen healthcare workers and persons at grocery stores getting COVID because they want to make sure that we have food and they're getting the disease. So I commend the bus drivers and the person that come out in that community to do that. It might not be in our budget, but I commend you for the character to do that because you, it shows that you care about the kids and you care about the well-being for them, to make sure kids are being fed. I'm going to do what I can to support schools. So I know this is a challenging time with our budget and I understand that. I understand we're working on numbers and trying to balance everything. But I, I just want to commend you for the work you're doing. And, and as we continue to work together to try and find some solutions, I just want to thank you for the work that all of our school system personnel, staff are doing for our children.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Wilder. And the question I kind of heard in Councilmember Hegelson, I just, I think we have had this information piece before. But when you talk about consolidation, just because you have 500 kids in one building, 200 in another, you make 700, 800 kids in one building. It does not mean you have still the supervisory level and the, the direct engagement as a principal or assistant principal as you deal with that 500. Like you don't remove staff when you add more to the numbers, is what I think we heard in previously in clarification. That was what I wanted to ask.
Yes, yes, that is a fair statement to say that. And some of our buildings may not hold that many kids. And all of our buildings aren't the same size to hold 5, 6, 700 children as well. So, and I will say, one of the things that was in our budget, our pre-COVID budget, was demographic enrollment software because we, as a school system, you know, without the task force, we're already looking at how we enroll and put kids in buildings across the city. But that's been cut from our budget as well. So just, just because we can't afford to, to have that, to pay for that software.
Thank you. Is that, was that the piece that you were going to add?
Well, I was going to, I, I had a question about a question. But first I wanted to say, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear that the budget that we presented pre-COVID has been for flat funding. And I do believe we've received flat funding for the last four years. Last year, we did ask you to help out with a little bit of increase, which we ended up not needing. And we didn't, I came to you and said, we don't need this. And we didn't take that additional $862,000 once we figured out what, what we could do in terms of just flat funding. And during the time that we have asked for flat funding, we have been able to give our staff as the city has done it to a bonus, a staff increase. So we've been making do. So some of the changes that you want to see happen are happening. We don't brag about, hey, we didn't rehire this position. It's not what we do, but we do sit down and have those thoughtful conversations. The second thing I wanted to say to council to send the message that we are all in this together is tonight is our board meeting night. And the board members who are here and the ones who are not here unanimously said, let's move our meeting. Let's go to council. Let's listen. Let's hear. Let's work together. And then we'll go back to our meeting and we'll work. And that speaks volumes for what I'm saying in terms of us all being in it together. We could have had our meeting and just been in our own little world, but we are not in our own little world. We are in Lynchburg. I'm in Lynchburg. I'm a resident. I'm a taxpayer of Lynchburg. So I live here, I work here, I take care of the kids here, and I love it here. And I wouldn't want to be any other place. So we're in it. We're here with you. We appreciate the time. We appreciate the conversation and just being part of the discussion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wright, did you have something? Because I, I have one follow-up for Mr., I think Deputy Waterka. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick, just a couple of quick clarifications because I didn't want folks to be sort of confused. So, so when we talk about the superintendent having control over expenditures, I should make clear, you do have control over, you know, a certain amount of discretionary spending, but really a lot of it is mandated for you by the state or federal authorities. And then, you know, you also have to provide services to students indiscriminate of need. Their need could be extraordinarily high, it could be somewhat small, but you are responsible for taking any child that comes to you regardless of their need and providing them a high-quality education. That's not within your discretion. So in fact, much of it is out of your control.
I don't get to pick the ones I want. And I want them all, but I don't get to, to isolate them.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that you don't actually have as much control over the budget as, as might seem otherwise obvious.
I think a perfect example of that is the counselor ratio, where the state is telling us how many counselors we should have. I don't have control in saying, well, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to do a higher ratio just so I can save money. I have to comply with that.
You have state mandates that you have to abide by.
Thank you.
And I'll, and I'll note that the council has been, has been sensitive in other arenas when other departments have come to us and said, we have a state mandate. And I think we've been, on the whole, pretty sympathetic to that, to that. So I wanted to note that. And then I also wanted just to make a couple of clarifying comments, which is that the task force on the future of education, first off, we had set aside funding for that. That money has now been pulled back, I think pretty much exclusively to serve the budget gap. So it's not as if the, the funding for the future of education in Lynchburg hasn't already been affected by this. It's not, it's not just the $1.5 million. It's the money that had been set aside for future use to really, to, to put a spur in our schools and, and give them a boost. And then additionally, the task force on education is not for the consolidation of schools, despite what some may say. That is not the goal of the task force on education. And I say that as a member of the task force. The goal of the task force for the, for the future of education in Lynchburg is really to think about and look at best practices for running a school, a modern school division and seeing what changes across a whole spectrum of needs, what changes might be made. But it is, and consolidation might be one of those solutions. But that is not the reason that that group has convened to shut down schools. So I want to make that very, very clear because it seems as though some folks just haven't understood that. So thank you very much for taking the time to be with us today. And I should also note, it is National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes, it is.
Ironically, given this conversation. So I, I don't want to speak further members of council, but I certainly am very grateful to the teachers and for all that the educators in our school system do to, to keep our kids educated and provide them best opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Wright. And a couple of things behind that. One, thank you for clarifying that some of the potential money that comes in gets passed through to private schools. That's something I think people don't understand. You know, you think that private schools are self-funded in a sense, and they are not. They do get passed through funds at the different levels at some point. So that's something that benefits many citizens, that you're a fiduciary of those funds that then go on to the other systems in our city. And so.
Parents are taxpayers too.
And so are public school parents taxpayers as well. And so, you know, I was a public school parent and I paid taxes, so I understand that. And also on the task force issue that we discussed, I did have. we discussed, I did have a question from tax member, tax, task force members on the continuation of being able to meet in some form. And so that's something I wanted to run by, even though they decided to hold off on that for a while because of the initiate COVID discussions. If there's something that we could ask the city attorney about regarding that potential, not for the full scale, but just those immediate task force members, I think, or at least the leadership of that. So if that's a question that we could ask Mr. Irwin on how that potentially could happen, because all of this discussion is based on the unknowns of what we're going to do with school systems. And so, you know, we could end up having 10 empowerment academies. And the only reason I say that is because with social distancing, with the inability to group, with not knowing how we can bring people back into buildings, we may be looking at different situations that require coaching, teaching, the delivery. Where are we going to put people? How are we going to alternate the days, which you referenced at the beginning of the dialogue 45 minutes ago or so. And so I just want people to stay aware that just because it sounds good to cut, 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 consolidate, consolidate, less off, that was a bunch of conversation and questioning and rationale based on pre-COVID, and what people would like to have. And yes, the numbers. But now we don't know the area we're moving into, and we're not opening city government up. That's something that people make a point about. We're not opening up ourselves to large numbers or crowds until these phased-in approaches and safety issues are addressed and concerned. And so I just want people to keep that in the mind as well when we are moving forward with this conversation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It is 6:37. Next item.
Seven minutes past. Are we starting after? Are we going to do our closed session or not? I guess we have to.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Yes. So we are stopping point that we are at for our list items.
We're sort of all over the maps.
Yeah, we're nowhere.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I can make a motion that we go into closed session, if you would so like, for the, as presented, as with those code sections that you have on the agenda?
Yeah. I think I would accept that. Is everyone all right with?
Unless any other members have roll called.
Right. No, we have, no, we have a couple of things. No, we're going to sit here until we get through this agenda. So for that being said...
We typically have the agenda scheduled, you know, for the time. And so from 4:00 to 6:00, and this was originally not a meeting that was planned, so lots of us had adjusted to be here to make sure. We saw 6:00 o'clock timeframe, so.
And during the time of a pandemic, number three is to update on city actions regarding COVID-19. We did not get through this during last week. So I would, I would like to go ahead and go through that, and then follow with roll call.
So just very quickly on, we'll just go through the ESF, or Emergency Support Functions. Some items, a couple of items we'll just point out. So we do want to point out that the emergency manager ESF-5 function has been working with the Central Virginia Community Continuum of Care to develop a homeless, a plan for homeless folk, homeless individuals, excuse me, that may have been exposed to COVID-19. We can give you more details on that plan if that does occur, if you do need that. We're continuing to take a look at our PPE burn rate and reporting in the VDEM through our resource support, and making sure that our folks have the PPE that they need. And ESF-11, Agricultural Natural Resources, this is something we've talked about a little bit tonight, is that our neighborhood centers have continued to partner with the city schools. On their feeding program, last week, we were able to serve 1,352 children and 778 adults with food from...
Jenny had stated before, and we talked about it again tonight with the schools, that the feeding was through the USDA and the parks and rec wasn't...
It's a combination.
Okay.
Parks and rec, neighborhood centers are helping.
It sounds like the city's doing...
Helping the schools. These numbers are just parks and rec numbers.
Yeah. And these are things we're doing. So, and as I said, it's also 778 adults were served with food from the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. Our long-term recovery mitigation group has been really very active. They're meeting twice weekly, and they've been a big part of the budget revision that we've had. We've also, the Economic Development Authority also approved a business recovery loan process. We'll be getting more information as the details of that are finalized, as well as the CDBG grant application. Later this week, we're going to be talking more about the suspension of water service cutoffs beyond what we've already done. We'll have more about that. And we'll be also developing a recovery plan, identifying various metrics to track economic recovery. So lots going on in the long-term recovery and mitigation group. External Affairs continues to work with the mayor and the city manager on their weekly and bi-weekly messages to the community and the city staff. We've also started working with United Way and 211 to assist residents that may have opportunities to need resources throughout the community. Finally, the elder support line is volunteering, ESF-17, the volunteer and donations group, is continuing to staff the support line at the Templeton Senior Center. Last week, we answered 52 calls for those folks. A couple really quickly, just two really good little, good items. Volunteers from the Natural Bridge, Appalachian Trail Club in Greater Lynchburg, off-road cyclists, they volunteered for the month of May to assist with maintenance of the city's various earth and trails. So that's very helpful, as we have lots of people out in the trade house. We're also seeing sales increasing at the community market, which is, which is great. And finally, the Lynchburg Public Library has begun delivering books that have been on hold for several weeks to over 200 library patrons in the last week. So lots of great stuff going on, and I don't know if that was quick as I was supposed to go, or not.
What is the water extension? What's the date? Not June 10?
So we have, we, it was June 30th is the...
May 30.
No, it may 30th, and we're going to continue.
Oh, it's May 30.
Yeah. And we're going to continue, we're going to talk about extending that potentially to June 30.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the COVID update. I will have roll call. I do have a couple of announcements at the end of that, but Councilmember Nelson?
For the sake of time, I have none.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Just again, thanking all of our citizens that are working so well together in this condition that our nation is facing. And I've seen such beautiful parts of our humanity, where we support persons, we support persons that we need, doing the food for persons, supporting our providers, from fire to police and healthcare workers, how we continue to show them how much we love and appreciate the work they're doing by being on the front line. And all of our citizens are working together. So I can, I want to continue to commend them and thank them for making our Lynchburg city stronger. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to formally ask that the Virginia Cooperative Extension be added to the list for consideration. I know we had sort of discussed that by email, but I wanted to make it sure that it was formally added, and just the $2,000 for operating support, not the salary increases that they've requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Verchek, thank you for this. Thanks for this. I seem to remember some other rows that were on previous versions, though. Wasn't there something that showed the typical contribution, the excess contribution from the city over and above the state required contribution?
That's in the city manager's budget message. It was never on that report.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. And, you know, just a reminder to council, we keep adding things to the list. We don't have the money. So I don't know how you will plan to balance the budget, but with putting the school money back, with putting the, with putting the fire department money into it, with adding things, there's not enough money to go around. So we're in for a long slog to balance this thing.
Councilmember Hegelson?
I guess this is another roll call, but this was the, since Councilmember Wright added a few things for the list, you know, I'm not sure if that $600,000 for the two-way traffic has been finalized yet. Hopefully not. That'd be nice to have that on the list.
Council approved two-way traffic, and that funding is...
Yeah, but it's in, it's in this budget too, though, I believe, right?
Yeah, that decision's been made.
But I mean, it's in this budget, isn't it?
No, it's in prior year's budget.
Yeah, it's a prior year's budget.
So even though the money hasn't...
It's already been appropriated.
So even though the money hasn't been spent, because of your having other things that have been appropriated in prior to your budget, where people said, "Well, maybe we appropriated things in this year's budget, but we've put them on hold because of a lack of revenue." So anyway, just, I think that would be wise, since we haven't obviously spent the money yet. So...
No, we are, we are spending the money, as I understand it.
Because we approved it.
It's on design.
So...
So anyway, that would be good to have on there. That would have been a thing that probably somebody that said, "Hey, we have less revenue coming in because of this pandemic" a few months ago, would have probably put that on the top of the list, I would imagine. Secondly, there are several things. We finally, Robin sent us the city manager's budget, if you all saw. There are several things on there with the travel.
Are we still discussing budget?
That's what I just said.
I feel we will have a roll call.
Well, that's what I just said.
I would like to open this up for a budget discussion. I can be here till 10:00.
I just said, Councilmember Wright added something to the list, right?
I used my...
She used that, to do that to the list, so that's why I said, if you were listening a few seconds ago.
I was. I was listening to the one item he added. You're having a discussion.
I'm, no, I'm adding this to the list. So there are several items on the list, since we just got the budget sent to us from Robin. There's numerous items on there that should be on that, on the list. You know, I think, I think there weren't lots of discussion. So those I'd like on the list, and you said in the email back to Councilmember Wright.
I have authority regarding what exactly you're talking about.
So, Councilmember Wright, you emailed them back.
I know what Councilmember Wright did.
So you said it needed to be done in the formal fashion in the meeting. Councilmember, I wasn't going to say that's a roll call, but he did, and you didn't chew him out for it. So that's why I'm saying what should be on the list is the travel. There was $30,000 of dues to the city league. There was 20,000 of city manager conferences. There were other, lots of different fees that were for travel and whatnot, and conferences, continuing aid conferences. That totaled at least $50,000. There's a few other items in there, but so those two specifically.
If you could call me and tell me exactly what they are, we will put them on the list.
Good. So anyway.
Thank you. I will defer a few of my time for your comments after Vice Mayor Irwin.
Well, I just want to say, well, a couple of things. But one thing, I just, I know this is not the appropriate time, but the money set aside for two-way cannot be used to fund ongoing compensation, period. Then I also want to make a point to really thank all of our essential workers, including the first responders, and certainly all the people you see stocking the grocery stores and helping us out in every way. And I also want to thank our community for wearing masks in public to protect the people that they're breathing on. I think this is something that is very respectful to do. It's not for yourself, it's for preventing your germs going to other people. And I notice that our community is really following through on this very nicely, and I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, for a couple of items. The local election was moved from today to Tuesday, May 19. The deadline to request an absentee ballot by fax, email, or regular mail is Tuesday, May 12 by 5:00 p.m. The deadline to return your absentee ballot is Saturday, May 16 by 5:00 p.m. In-person absentee voting is available daily from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. until Saturday, May 16. Thanks to everyone for the compliance, again, with the COVID-19, staying at home, social distancing, and wearing masks in public directives. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. I just want the community to know, because I do receive emails of people who are out and about, they understand Governor Northam's directives and moving forward in different phases. But we have many citizens who are very upset because they see a lot of people who are not wearing masks. And so they ask the mayor, they ask me to move that forward in some directive. That is personal self-responsibility and accountability to the directives, and you can choose to or not to. But as the vice mayor said, it is protective of not only others, but yourself, but it is a protective measure suggested and expected from the federal, state, and CDC guidelines. So while the local are adhering to all of that, it is, again, personal self-responsibility and accountability to keep a community safe. So for those who have emailed me, I just wanted to publicly state that, because there are many citizens who are out and about and are upset that others are not adhering to the federal, state, and CDC guidelines. So I wanted to make that public. And to follow up, I have a proclamation. For Public Service Recognition Week, which I would like to read for all of those reasons that we all know, whereas during Public Service Recognition Week, we pay tribute to our local government employees for their unwavering dedication to public service, and whereas, whether during normal times or times of great challenge, the city's workforce remains diligent and ready to serve, and whereas, in recent months, city employees have acted with resolve to respond to an unprecedented pandemic and to go beyond the norm to provide service to the public under the most stressful and unusual of circumstances, and whereas, emergency managers, first responders, and law enforcement are continuing to provide lifesaving care, comfort, and support to those affected by the pandemic. Refuge collectors, public works, and water utility employees are keeping our neighborhoods clean, our water safe and running, and our buildings clean. And whereas, social workers, juvenile service workers, and others are providing service to our vulnerable populations, and countless other employees are providing the valuable administrative support necessary to ensure they have the resources and information they need to continue to serve the Lynchburg community. And whereas, it is during these difficult times that we are especially grateful to those public servants for their experience, expertise, and commitment, and whereas, we are indebted to them as a community for their service and offer our gratitude and appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, I, Mayor Trenae Eltwitty, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, Virginia, do hereby proclaim, May 3 through 9, 2020, Public Service Recognition Week, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of city government employees. Thank you very much. And if I could just personally give all of you a hand clap and applause for what you do at every level. Thank you very much. So with that and roll call being over, I will take consideration of a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for the position of city manager pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
Close session.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are in closed session.